All right.
So we're doing public comment at the end.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so this this meeting today on May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four officially opens. I don't need to.
Oh. Uh, no.
Was it for that?
Yeah, it's below.
Yeah, that's just my German.
Oh, oh. So, yeah, so.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the twenty twenty four Long Beach Transit Board of Directors Retreat. I now declare this meeting to order. Board Secretary will now declare the role.
Chair said.
Sure.
Chair Vice Chairman.
Here.
Secretary of Treasury on your day.
Yeah.
Director Angeles.
How's it?
Director Camp.
Here.
Director Rowley.
Here.
Director slash.
Here.
We have a chorus.
All right. Okay, the first thing we're going to do today are look at the questions and comments from day one. I did take some time to add, you see, there's a lot more of the posts up on the wall right now. I did take some time to take the things that when I went and talked to you at the uh, end of the session in terms of asking you what you wanted more clarification on, to add those to our list, because you can't read them from here and because I think it's always good if we just get up and move around. I'm going to invite you all to come stand around these and we're going to just briefly go through them so that you have an opportunity to see what are the things that you'd like more follow up on? And then if there are any things that need to be added to that list, we can go ahead and do that. So if I could gather you up and bring you all over here. As we go through these, um, again, these are things that you all brought up, uh, uh, items that you would like to have more follow up for. And um, if there is something that's missing, you just let me know and we're going to make sure we keep it and add it to a list. You'll get a report on all of this at when I get back and get that pulled together and sent to you so that you have a chance to see it in a full written report as well. So the parking lot items that we had, uh, decision making on battery, electric and hydrogen vehicles, a request to visit each facility as a board. And the idea would be that that would occur in the summer, this summer in twenty twenty four. An analysis of who uses the transit and visitor center, meeting the needs of the, are we meeting the needs of the entire service area? A map of the service area routes ridership for each route and be able to share that data with all of you. Sharing more on service planning decisions for how routes are set up and data on ridership. Challenges for the water taxi, zero emissions, what's the deadline for compliance? And information on Aqua Link. Infrastructure for electrification, change of survey provider for the twenty twenty four, for twenty twenty four and the date for that survey. Um, the largest employers for work transit destinations, a greater breakdown of the demographic and destinations where people are going. Of new riders, two years or less, what percentage of those indicate that Long Beach Transit is their primary source of transportation? The organizational book for Long Beach Transit for each board member and Ken will make sure that you're getting, that you get that.
See, everybody got it.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So we'll be able to check that one off. Set date for a budget specific board meeting and that those dates are up here and that's coming up on the agenda. Okay, uh, revenue generators from the city or county and others for dial a lift and for the Aqua Services. Strategic partnership with the city or businesses, perhaps some cost share, for instance, free shuttle or water services. Um, and dollars that come in from all services, especially dial a lift in the water taxi or water transit, excuse me. Um, quantify advertising data with customers. Committee structure, the the agreement was yes, we would go ahead with a committee structure, but the specifics of the photo, the focus, the strategy versus hot topics, which direction you wanted that those committees to take is to be determined. Time commitment, how frequently to meet and the executive committee is a given that that committee will be continuing. Exhibit in community, um, for instance, at the library on Long Beach Transit's history of firsts. I have to, I'm gonna do suicide, I love that, I really think that that would be wonderful because I was so impressed as I read about you guys before coming here and as I listened to the reports and as I've talked to Mr. McDonald in terms of all the things that Long Beach Transit is doing. And I work in public transit everywhere across the country and I have to tell you, um, I think this is really worthwhile because I think this program really needs to be celebrated. I think, you know, there's always room for improvement everywhere, but you have a history of a lot of firsts and I think that's pretty remarkable. Um, telling the story and what what does that involve and and a consistent story among all of you. Uh, the number of presentations that have been made to the Cambodian community, um, government affairs, talking points and can did indicate that those exist, so it's making sure that you see those. In addition to APTA and CTA's work, what is Long Beach Transit doing to interface with state and federal officials? Um, in the advertising and other ways that, um, Long Beach Transit presents itself, uh, making sure that there are images where the community can see itself and show the diversity of the passengers um, who are riding Long Beach Transit. Long Beach Transit advertisements in are in English, um, and they showed one um, in Spanish up there, but making sure that they're in multiple languages. Um, the amount of money that comes through in the local spend dollars. The report from twenty twenty three on how bus stops are developed or removed and Jen's going to make sure that you have access to that. Um, Ken talked about the de-escalation training and the question was, could the board sit in on that training and so making sure that you're aware when that happens and and how that might be accomplished? The deadline for meeting zero emissions, Long Beach Transit's timeline of things that will happen to get there. What's being done to offer professional development opportunities for staff? What sources of revenue support for dial a lift and Aqua Services could the city or tourism play, uh, excuse me? This and then could the city or tourism play a role in generating that revenue? The total dollars spent across all categories on customer experience with a breakout by categories as well? What's the strategic plan for Long Beach Transit advertising? What data do we track on advertising results for our ridership? What advanced planning for twenty twenty eight is taking place and what is the timeline of preparation from now until then? Will the Olympics present opportunities for additional revenue such as park and ride? The relationship between Long Beach City and Long Beach Transit? Um, transit builds and benefits businesses and tourism and can that help in terms of that relationship? Uh, fiscal revenue estimate that bus stop advertising could generate? Ridership analysis for all routes. Micro transit, are we looking at this as an option and if so, how is that playing out? With Long Beach Transit hosting upcoming transit events um, and participating in local conferences, could the board members participate in the social events or receptions that go along with those? Long Beach Transit's state of employee morale, can the board see the survey questions before they go out to the staff? Um, what do we learn from employees who are leaving? Do we know why they leave Long Beach Transit? A need to clearly define Long Beach Transit's role with the city and moving people across the city for work, school and tourism. Add customer experience to one of the committees on those standing committees as to what is being covered. And then, um, staff compensation study, a timetable for when that that report is going to be done. And then a go pass report. I may have missed something, that's everything I had on my notes. I'll be going with Jen through the notes of the recording too, to make sure that that we've covered things. But this is the questions and comments that you requested follow up on yesterday. Okay, and I think that's a good place for us to start today. Hopefully, um, you see that we're tracking the things that the board is really concerned about and wants to have more information on. And you'll have some accountability of knowing when you get those reports, okay?
I thought there was some mention of seniors, uh, recruiting, uh, you know, uh, going out and 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 getting seniors enrolled in those, wasn't there?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't see that on the list.
Okay, let me grab this. Um, so outreach to older adults, that that type of seniors what we're talking about, okay? Yeah, that's right. Right. Thank you.
Hey Carol, uh, something that we did not discuss in detail, but it came up in one of my conversations with Ken, uh, during the executive committee, is some snapshot of risk management. In other words, how many claims, lawsuits, LBT, um, has? And uh, it's understood that it would probably be in closed session, those discussions. And I guess it could be quarterly, um, whatever the board decides, but currently the board doesn't know anything about, um, any claims, any accidents, um, other than the high, other than the high profile one that happened about three months ago. But, um, it'd be great for us to be informed.
Thank you so much.
Of that.
Okay, yes.
And so I have a larger global question.
Okay.
Um, related to, um, phone interviews and the written notes.
Yes.
Uh, what's your plan to integrate those comments that especially?
We're going to talk about that today and how that will play, that was going to play into a lot of our discussions for today.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll do the same thing of recapping what's, what needs to continue after that in terms of checking list and you were given the reports yesterday. But we'll be using that when we go through our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. And when we have our discussion of follow up.
Wonderful.
For today, yes. Yeah.
You're part of that, perhaps it's the same question as my fellow director, but this is, this is a lot, right, for any team?
Yeah.
And I worry about timeliness, not a lack of timeliness on behalf of the team, but just for the sheer.
How much time, exactly.
Will there be an opportunity for us to prioritize what maybe key three things are and then try?
That is part of this afternoon's discussion because obviously these are, these are all things that are important for you to know, right? But they don't all have the same priority. Okay, and so, um, between that and the stuff that we discuss about strategic planning and moving forward for where we see LBT going, um, in terms of its strategic plan, there have to be priorities set because you can't make everything top of the line. So yes, we will be doing priorities this afternoon. Or today. Other things.
One minor thing.
Yeah.
Can we have LBT update the photo of the board when it comes out to e-newsletters?
Okay.
No, the old board, not the current board.
Okay.
But so just to let you know, when the photographer was here, they've been wanting to go to the meetings, but because we don't have everybody at the meetings, they've probably been able to take a photo.
It just.
So it is, it's.
It's hard to see, yeah.
Yeah.
It's also for me a reflection of how they were.
Yeah, they wanted to do one yesterday, I know not everybody was maybe dressed in Freddie Pritchard yesterday. Um, they wanted to come to the main meeting, I said, we don't have a lot of people here, so they're planning to come to the June meeting, so.
So dress in your finest. Dress to impress.
So that's already, yeah, it's already. And then too as well, Director Camp, I know we have to get you, I headshot to mash everybody else's, so we contacted you about that as well.
No, he doesn't even.
I tried, I tried to get them to get the photographer over here.
All right. All right, so thank you for this and we'll, we'll follow up on this for the rest of, of the time. Um, I think a number of you were able to make comments as we did this. Are there any other comments from yesterday that you want to make sure are brought to the attention right now? Otherwise, we have a full day yet of, um, the rest of our strategic planning.
You have a written agenda as well.
We do have a written agenda.
One's right here.
Okay, sorry.
I also want to call attention to, because this was, um, for the board members that weren't here at, uh, the main meeting last week. Director Narve, uh, did, uh, create a motion. So, um, as you know, uh, the board did not pass the budget. Uh, at this last meeting, Director Narve asked for a special session before going to the June meeting. Uh, the June, the scheduled June meeting, June twenty seventh. Um, so up here I have three dates, June twelfth, June seventeenth and June eighteenth with times. Um, Ken and I discussed, it'll probably be a two hour, uh, special session at least. Um, so if you guys could look at your schedules and get back to me, um, and we'll see what date, uh, the majority of you are available, I know, uh, you know, it was discussed, we didn't pick a number, but six, seven, all of you, five, six. Um, it was requested that the board be present for a special session to discuss the budget, so these are the dates. Um, I'll email these dates to you, uh, we, uh, Ken and I would obviously like to have this, uh, nailed down by, uh, Friday.
You can just put checks behind them?
You can put checks by them? Put your name by them?
Yeah, initials or something so that you know where their check mark came from.
Yeah, we'll just do it in there. Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, when you guys have a chance, you can just come up. Our initials. Thank you.
Jen, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I suggested the special session if the board deemed it necessary.
Okay.
For further discussion on the budget. But if the board feels more comfortable after the retreat not to have a special session, that's fine too.
Okay.
And I believe I said that, if necessary.
Okay, so yeah, so we can, I guess, I, I don't know if anybody's leaving early today, but we still need to vote on it.
Right.
We don't pass a budget, three days later, we have no budget to operate the organization. So if we push it to the end, that would be a very dangerous precedent to set. That's why I'm recommending we have a special session, so if something comes up, we could vote at the board meeting and and figure out all the resolution to pass it, but if we wait until the board meeting, that window is very, very narrow to put the organization in a very, very bad place. We wouldn't have a budget to operate. And we, it never happened after I asked the attorney, that has never happened, so I, when you ask uncharted territory, you'd be headed into.
Right.
I just, yeah. I, I'll briefly, um, under the government code and under the bylaws and the articles of incorporation for this organization, it has to, it has to adopt the budget by, um, June thirtieth. Ken and I had a conversation about where the organization is financially. Uh, I think, I don't think you can, this organization can carry forward last year's budget because there is nothing there.
Yeah, we couldn't say extend the, the, the present budget, because the present budget is, would have been, well, used up, so we would have no money to operate, I just want to make sure that we clear that because after that, we have to be getting shut down to all the organization. I had never been in that spot, so we had to figure out, so I'm, I'm employing that we do something early, have the discussion and know, okay, what is it to get a budget for the organization?
And I would also add to the, uh, to the board, I mentioned yesterday that Long Beach Transit is governed and reg, governed and regulated by the state, the feds, the county and LA with respect, with respect to the monies that it receives. And one of the, one of the criteria for each of those regulatory agencies and those grand tours is that that, that Long Beach Transit adopt the budget in order to receive the money that from the past two organizations such as Elan Metro or from FTA and so forth, so.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. McDonald, who, as you can see from the agenda, is going to be talking to you about design thinking.
Okay, um, I wanted to, in a passive document, maybe I'll do it at the end. Um, I wanted to give a brief overview, it's going to be pretty, but just to give some, uh, understanding of what, sorry, but it's not turning my back and speaking, can you get it out of here? That's very respectful. Thank you.
So I talked, um, in the budget, we have a outline of, uh, design thinking and what we're, what we are planning to do or what we're doing in the organization and why is, um, why is design thinking, um, a thought about or an idea or focus for the organization? Uh, uh, part of it, if you don't know much about design thinking, it's, um, it originated in, um, in Stanford University and there was a two, two professors, Hassel and Plattner, and they had an institute that came up with a design years ago, about nineteen sixty something, I think it was, they started, um, it, it first was, um, was, I, no, I forgot the term it was called before, they turned it into design thinking, it was like project, project design, that was it, project design that they first came up with. Then they started developing this and came up with these five elements of what would have been termed design thinking. Now, if you, you may say, well, I never heard about design thinking, if anybody here puts money in a the, uh, excess change in Bank of America, if anyone of your bank with the Bank of America and you use that, um, save the change that you put, if you, or or where they round out dollars for you and they put it in a saving account, that came up from a design thinking endeavor. It, um, 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 Bank of America was trying to get people to save money, people were not saving. This turned into two to three billion dollars for, um, for Bank of America, just keep the change. And it was one of these things, they started looking at how people were banking and one of the things they noticed is that in the balancing che, checks account, a lot of, uh, women were rounding it off, so it'd make the to balance their, their checkbook a lot easier. So if, if they had four dollars and sixty three cent, they would just say five dollars. And so they started looking at, wow, why can't we take this and come up with a program that would have them help people to save money? At the same time, it made billions of dollars for the bank that they invested, none of the money came back to the people of saved the, who had, who had done that, but that was one of, one of the things that, um, that they first started off in terms of a big business endeavor of design thinking. It is really a critical part of, of space exploration right now. Just about every space exploration, look at, um, design thinking and there are a lot of, um, examples that we can share, but what, what is this design thinking, what is it? Um, so it is explained as a human centered approach to innovation that is anchored in understanding customers' needs, both internal and external, and generating new creative ideas and prototyping before implementing. It is a process of creative problem solving that includes understanding the user's point of view, building human centeredness, problem statements, creating solutions through ideation and experimentation. And in the end, it deliver, it delivers extremely positive results when we have clear problem statements which drive our activities towards great outcomes. Uh, one of the things when I was in this program in Stanford, they would talk about is if you make a really good problem statement, you have solved fifty percent of your problem. If you can truly identify what the problem is and have a clear problem statement, in that problem statement, you have identified more than fifty percent of how you can solve a problem. How, how is it, how does this design thinking, so you begin with what is called the empathize phase? Where, and my little goody light is not working, but I would ignore that. See, um, so where you learn about your audience by observation and interview, so that's the first thing, you go out and you meet. And like in our case, I'll talk about what we're doing right now, what is called a journey map. Um, once you go out and you talk to the audience, understand, you come back and try to clearly articulate the problem that they want to solve, what are the challenges that they're facing? Not what we think they're facing as a problem, but what exactly did they tell you was the problem? And, and then from that, you start brainstorming about ideas, creative ideas about how, how you, um, possible solutions, um, that can come up from this. I have the, as you go out and talk to the customers, now the way that we normally solve problems, we talk to the customers and then we immediately decide, but we know what the solution is, we go right over here from, from, from empathize straight into prototype. There's no point about ideating and understanding that we clearly articulated what the problem is, because in normal way to resolve problems, you just jump right from, from the point of what I think the problem is to the solution. One, one of the important part is in, in, in most of the design of it is design prototype that you can test all or some of the solutions that you came up with and then get real feedback. So that when you test it, you want to come back here and make sure that you did solve the problem. Because a lot of time we jump right into the fact that we know and we tested and therefore that's the end of it. But this is an iterative process that comes back into, did we really solve the problem? So in, in the next slide, so this is what we're doing at Long Beach Transit. Um, here we, what we've, what? If you go, this is a, is a, I'll clear, you'd never find this in any book, this came from Ken McDonald's head from my years of working in transit, there are no one that wrote a book, maybe I should, that's what, wherever I put this on in some plate, in some place that I gave what we're doing, someone said, maybe you should sit down and write the book, Ken. Um, how do you, what are the elements that makes, uh, effective transit? So, over years of working with this, I started out looking, you, you want, the first thing is the information, what it is what we're trying to accomplish, like we have on this year, there are fifty, almost fifty items over there that we have to kind of peer down, how do we deal with this issue here? But the information that drives an organization, we want to be a public transit, we hear we talk about, um, about micro transit, do we want to ride bu, run buses, do we want to run small vehicles? What, when you begin the transit system, that information is important to beginning, to be, to begin the transit system. From there, you come up with a schedule, if you can, the first phase of that, it, after you, you look at it in terms of the, is that you want to have this reliable information from the marketplace that drives the, the accurate schedules. One of the biggest problem that most transit agency faces, you put a schedule out and you don't continually look at how much time it takes, as traffic grows and you get into a city and you have a transit schedule, you constantly have to check that, we do this almost every year to make sure that that schedule could still operate in the time that you said it was going to. Otherwise, you end up with a schedule that started off a half an hour and takes an hour because of traffic. Once you've identified the accurate schedule, you want dependable, well-maintained vehicles. Now you see, we come from information, schedule, vehicles, then you develop procedures. How are we going to make this happen? What are we going to do in terms of delivering the service? We have done one, two, three, four, we just got to operators. If you get into any transit, the first thing you, well, you need operators. I don't always believe it, so when someone tells me that, I know you obviously don't understand much about transit because you don't, look how far down you are before we get to operator. All these things have to happen in the organization and you got to have well-trained, well-skilled operators now to provide the service. And supervisors who can manage knowledgeable supervisors, who can manage these procedures to deliver for the operators. I was in union negotiation and the union president tell me, well, you don't need supervisors and management, you just give a guy a bus and send him out there. I thought, wow, that would be, that would be a hell of a transit to want to operate, but the people that believes that. All you do is you pay operators and send them out, but that's, this whole process has to happen. And then you want communication with the operators, with the, with, with the customers, with the supervisors, that, that effective communication, both internally and externally, is important because you want to have customer-centric operators who are delivering that, that service to the people, because it's people in the people business. You, people moving people. One of the important part that I think, I, I, I was talking to Josh about this, that we have to look at in terms of the, that we talk about partnership in the city, is as the city grows, how do you manage your congestion? And you have, um, routes that are more cent, centric to buses operating on that route. A lot of the times when you find that the transit was there and you have services, we add more and more into the routes. We want bikes, we want walking lanes, we want, uh, bicycle lanes, um, we want, we want scooter lanes. Everybody wants something on that same route and the congestion begins to build up and the system gets slower and slower and slower. And the final part of it is that of all of this, you get feedback to come right back into that information of how you make sure that the information you put in comes right back to, um, understanding the service you're delivering. So we took, so my, my thought is, if we took all of these and we filter them through this, what I explain as design thinking, we look at, if you were schedules, we look at our schedules and take every single one of these here, information, schedules, vehicles, every, and put it through that filter, we would have a new, uh, design, a new thing, I think it, new thinking approach to how we deliver service. We would design, redesign a lot of our processes and change some behavior, what behavior that we need to change to have those new metrics that gives us these outcomes, the customer value, community value and stakeholder value that is the real reason that we really put transit out there. Uh, we. We started this now, so every we 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 coordinated. Forty people in the organization, managers, some supervisors, some analysts. And each we separate them into groups, except for the feedback, we have we have three and eight groups. That goes here in the in in take each one of these and go out on the system. If you are an information, have a journey map, we select some routes and you go out and come back with a with a. Information analysis of empathizing to be able to define. What are the problems that our customers are facing that we need to fix? So if we want to optimize the system, get efficiency to organizational optimization. We change the process of how we do that. And we will come up with some new metrics of how we would measure that we are succeeding or failing. And then make changes to continue to improve the organization. They are doing this as we speak on some in early June, we're going to have these presentations. You explained your journey map that you went on in some, I give you an example. One of the journey map is that you ride a bus to the airport and then you go in the airport. Look at what customers are trying to get to the airport, why they're trying to get the airport. And what do you think we can do to improve that service? So that's like one of those, you pick, you go to hospital, we pick a hospital, you ride the bus to a to a hospital. And you walk into the hospital emergency room and kind of look at what is happening here that customers. We can help customers to be able to use transit. And it's not sitting at your desk and saying that you know what to do. You have to go out and ride the bus and come back with a journey map. So that's what the first phase of that, then we will come up and. My job is to teach them how to define the problems that they had. And then begin to do ideation so we can do process redesign. So that's the goal of where we're going with this. One thing you 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 did not see up here, uh two things was finance and I T. If why is that? Because they're umbrella parts of the organization. You cannot do any of this without finance. And you can improve it more and more if you have technology. So I know the question is always asked, well, Ken, how is that those are missing? They're not missing, they're the umbrella. You can't do any of this without finance. And as we look at it, technology become a part. Okay, what technology do we use now? And how can that technology help us to be better in the future? Um, I will stop there. That's basically the outline of what we're doing. I did not um. I did not explain that when we went through the budget and the details I'm doing here, but I thought it was important to share. With the board what we're doing and what my expectations are to come out of this. Like I said, it's not in a book. You can't find it in any book anywhere. It's something that we are developing here, it's not in any other transit agency that I know of, so we're like. We're the first going into this that I know of. I know the people that have used design thinking. But not to the extent that we're using it here at Long Beach Transit. With that, I would end. If you have any questions or any comments that you understand that. That's the, when I say optimization or efficiency through organization or optimization. This is what we're saying that we're going to do and everyone um who is in a position. Analysts, supervisor, managers are going through this train, in this same room here, going through this training right now. To put us in that, um, what I expect to see comes out of this is improved service delivery. If there are any questions, comments, anything that you would, I'd be willing to take that now. Go ahead.
I my my team just literally has to use this every single day. So I know you and I have had conversations about this. And I think design thinking is a really important. In an organization, but one of the curious things about design thinking is that at first. It feels like you're moving slower than ever.
Yes.
And so. What is what is leadership's perspective on handling some employee pushback and feedback? When they've got deadlines, but you're now asking them to also learn this new process in time? Then they don't see the investment till a year later. They're like, oh, we are faster. We're going to have to take that hurdle, right? What's the approach to that for now?
So Randy, that's a really great question because we're going through that right now, where I am trying to help employees because. There there in that change, there's confusion. Most times, um, what I had to explain when we started this is that most transit agencies or most businesses. Operate as a command and control management. I'm in charge, I tell you what to do and you go out and do it. And we think that that's effective. It's not. So now you're talking about, we're going to send you out there and you have to go find the problem. Well, yeah, that's the whole point of sitting and helping the employees to understand why. And the ones have gone out and do the journey map. When they come back and we talk about it, there's a whole light, a light bulb that comes on. I've had two employees come to me and said, I never looked at it before as as direction, as command and control, but now I understand. So they have to go through the process. That's the only way you get it. You have to do what we're talking about. Go on that journey map. Come back and then I would sit with them and help you to understand. What would what were the challenges that you saw and then how do we solve those challenges? So yes, that's going on right now, confusion, right? People are in the point of, wow, this is not what I'm used to.
So are you picking out some of those people that have those lightbulb moments to help the leaders within their teams to then?
Yeah, another good question, yes, yeah. Another good question or statement, yes. At the at the June meeting, I have already identified three people, one who's going to come and talk about their. Their um. What I would say, epiphany about um about command and control and the fact of you being in charge of. Going out and being responsible. There's support that we have to give them, the confusion that people who've gone through confusion and then say, now I understand. How they they explain to others how they got there. Because the first day that I went through this, everybody wanted me to tell them, how do I make a problems, define a problem? Make a statement definition. There are no right answers. And when I said that, it was like, well, that's kind of political answer. No, there's not a right answer. But you will discover what you saw and how we could have use that to help us to get better. So in the all way, you want an answer given to you. It's two plus two equal four. Now we're telling you it's two plus three. We're not sure if that's five. You have to figure it out and you and you'll get a better answer if that makes sense what I'm saying.
Sure does.
Okay. So that's the process that we're going through right now is getting folks to understand. This is. This is really new to us in transit. We haven't done transit this way. So it it I expect, I'm looking at eight months. For us to do this where we get to the point where people are really coming up with new um with behavioral changes. That we need to come up with new metrics. Because we have to measure it to see if it's succeed, if it's succeeding and then what do we need to tweak? Okay, I hope that clarified.
It does. I I think it's something for the board to keep in mind too, as we like ask for specific data. Or if we have a specific idea that we want to throw up on the board, recognizing that because we're not part of this process, we're missing out on a lot of this.
Yes.
And so I think it's important for us to recognize that as a policy and governance board. Not a prescriptive go out and do this board. We need to recognize that at first that might be frustrating for us too, because there's going to be a time sink. It's going to seem like we're not getting the answers that we want. But so long as everybody understands how this process works over the long time. It should pay dividends.
I appreciate you saying that because I'm looking at that list of fifty things over there and that's what I'm seeing. It's um pretty prescriptive.
Yeah.
And so we have to look at what it is. There are some of them that are straightforward answers. And there are some things that are going to. We have to take a different approach of how we go about it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we do the same thing we always did and we get the same, that same result that wasn't always working.
Yeah.
So thank you for saying that.
Of course.
While the early prescriptive is um just something to pay attention to and be. Careful about, we have to allow the executive director and staff to do their job. You know, at the same time, this board brings um has been selected because it brings individually. Insights that are valuable for the institution. So I think as this, you know, understanding this process and as it. Um, is. Developing, uh reminding ourselves to be patient, I think the message. For staff is to keep us informed. So as the process is developing, uh we have a sense of, you know. What's happened to that seed we put in that dirt? It's dark. It's been a long time. I've been staring at this grass. What's going on? You know, you have the camera that's under the dirt and you know that the seed is now germinated and it's making its way towards the top, but we don't. And so. That communication, I think, will um address whatever. Anxiety the board has about how things are progressing because they've been told. You know, it's it's at this stage of the, you know, the filtration process. You can't see it yet, but pretty soon. You're going to see a nice little juicy leaf and everything's going to be okay. And I think that gives folks who may have. You know, concerns or the need to report out to their constituencies what's going on, the ability to do so.
Yeah, I I I totally agree and that's um I I'm giving this. But I have to give the employees the opportunity to solve the problem. So I I think that's where I I ask for the patience because. I have to let them, if they don't go through it, we will get back to the same way we always did business. Because they would be waiting for McDonald to tell them, let's do it this way. So I I I I think the patience I'm asking in the beginning, yes, it's going to be very, very slow. It's going to ooze. Not flow, it's going to flow at some point, but in the beginning, it's going to be really, as I'm giving this. Next month, you're not going, I'm not going to expect that next month, we're going to have a solution coming up and saying, here's a solution. It could be three or four months before one of these things really, and some is going to take off faster than others. Because some employees are going to get it quicker than others. So that would be the way, the patience of what we want to do here. Has to infiltrate the organization before we can say yes, the seeds. So I agree that yes, we. Giving information, but that information has to be that coming from the employees, not just from me. I have to take what they're giving and and bring that in. Otherwise, I would have gone back to that same thing of just prescribing what they should do. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. But and I and I appreciate you saying that because I think what it provides is an opportunity for me to clarify. Ask your communication with the employees, which is not our role. And I think, you know, what it feels like on my second day. In action here, there's an opportunity for is for you to just tell us. What's happening in that process when it's whatever it might be. Hey, we we decided we wanted this initiative. Okay, let me run it through the Plinko board and you know, it's happening on the Plinko board. And while I appreciate all that you've said, the employees have to do this and has to be the process. My expectation is at least is that as the farmer, you know what's going on under that dirt and you're paying attention to it. And I'm just, I work at the grocery store. I just want to know when I'm getting my tomatoes. So you have the ability to say, okay, well, this is the process. You're a grocery store owner. You don't know anything about farming. You know, there's got to be a few seasons that pass and you explain all that stuff to me. But at least it helps me understand what happened from the parking lot to the produce section and I don't feel disconnected.
Yeah. All I can say is I hear that at this point, yes.
And thank you. Um, I think um perhaps I didn't um. Wasn't very clear at the budget at at our meeting, but this like what can uh what Carl is saying. This helps a lot uh with understanding your vision of the budget and how you presented it. You mentioned design thinking, but you didn't go into much detail about it. So I appreciate you elaborating and explaining it. Uh, I'm familiar with the SOAR analysis and the SWOT analysis. I've never heard of this, so I look forward to um hearing more about it six, eight, nine months from now. And seeing how all this is and how you're using this to implement. Along with the presentations from the VPs yesterday. It helps understand a lot more of what they're working on and what. They have uh in store for the year and understand again in the context of the budget that you presented last week. So uh, thank you. It's very helpful.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, I think that was what I wanted to just give a briefing on it so we can move on to the rest of the. Thank you all. Oh, there's one thing. I I um, there is an article, this was probably the first thing I'm that you give. If you want to read, I think everybody, I just want to share this. Because it's a pretty good article that gives a pretty um detailed. Input on design thinking and the five elements of design thinking. If you, when you can't sleep at night, this is better than a. Better than sleeping, Bill.
If you could take out the written report that I gave you um yesterday, it's the report on the written survey for. The board members and representatives. You all took that written survey and and sent it back to me and this is just to um further our discussion. There anyone else who needs another copy? We don't want to regurgitate things that we have already gone through. Okay, and so that was the reason for asking those questions on the written survey. Is to start analyzing and looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. That that face um Long Beach Transit. SWOT analysis have been around for a long time. They're well known in in doing strategic planning. It's an opportunity for us to really look at what we bring to the table so that as we discuss. What the strategic plan is for the organization moving forward, that we have the information. That we need to know where our pitfalls might be. Where are the things that we have to make sure that we're looking out for? And then what do we bring to the table that helps make those opportunities out there? Stronger for us so that we can move forward and and see progressive movement. If you would turn to page four, that's where we start to discuss uh the strengths and weaknesses. And we're going to start with the strengths. I'm going to go through the things that I heard from all of you. If you see a bunch of X's, it, there's one X for each person who mentioned that particular thing or something. Very, very similar. When we're done looking at this, I'll give you the opportunity to add to the strengths list. But it's important for us to just recognize what does uh Long Beach Transit bring to the table in terms of its resources? Whether it be um financial or people or equipment, um whatever it happens to be. Management's um strengths that we want to make sure that we're building on. So we'll go through these. It's it's people, great staff, including drivers, mechanics and the CEO. And that was overwhelmingly stated by the majority of you. Vast routes and access to cities outside of Long Beach's boundaries. Good branding and then a comment on the good color of red. Okay, increasing our electric bus fleet, balanced budget for twenty twenty five. So that costs come in at budget and several people mentioned that. Not raising fares for two years. So through twenty twenty five, fares remaining the same. Having a dedicated user group, people who are. Riding on Long Beach Transit, the buses run on time. There are smooth operations and we had more than one person comment on that. The buses are clean and in good service. We have strategies to move tourists with shuttles, water shuttles and catamarans. That there is um a level of thought leadership that dictates how the agency moves forward. And that Long Beach Transit is often recognized for implementing innovative initiatives and technological advancements. Which set us apart from other transit agencies. All of those are really impressive strengths that Long Beach Transit brings to the table. In terms of moving forward and continuing to have um excellent operations that meet the needs of. Its passengers and the citizens of the area. Are there other strengths that you would like to call out at this time? Again, we're going to use these strengths to show when we're we're planning our strategies for moving forward. That we build off of this, that this is a firm base that you start with. Are there any that you disagree with? Yes.
I would just add that based on the presentation yesterday, it seems like very involved in the industry. Industry recognition, maybe you call it.
You heard a lot about firsts yesterday, and I think that's that is something that's really shows innovation and strength for moving forward.
Again, learning, semi converted will be yesterday, I think, in terms of workforce development. Uh, operators and training and and that, you know, that was a first that I had certainly learned, you know, uh. I think that's a strike, the fact that you can take a person who, you know, doesn't necessarily, wasn't thinking about being an operator, all of a sudden you provide all the training to make them an operator.
Thank you. I think that's an important one, and I've added it to the list. Mr. Kemp.
I I think it's it's implied in a lot of these, but I think it's important to to call it out specifically, but I feel like um, Long Beach Transit is trusted in the community. Right, respected, but also as a community partner.
Any other comments on the strengths? The one we wanna do is examine our weaknesses, not so that we call out all the things that could be improved about Long Beach Transit, but rather to recognize the things that may need some attention so that we always are putting our best foot forward and that we are moving forward in a strategic direction that we want to move. So the ones that came up on the uh, survey that you all completed, um, funding and not so much current funding as it is planning for your fiscal cliff. Okay, the the concern about um, future funding, once the uh, monies that have come through the COVID, whether it be CARES or CHR or or ARPA funds, um, once those are not available to us, that there's a concern about some funding. Filling vacancies and hiring challenges, and that was brought up by more than one individual. Preparing for electrification, high turnover, potential that we're overlooking some employees' needs, which could become more apparent as financial chan- challenges grow. We're not knowing how Long Beach Transit's employees are doing regarding staff morale and policies. Difficult to compete with other agencies in terms of salary and benefits, which make it hard to attract and retain necessary talent. Slower than the private sector in implementing new technologies and innovations. Long Beach Transit's perfection in operations and the status quo comes at the expense of embracing change and focusing on future needs. Changing needs of the traveling public and the financial necessity to change the service approach. Focus on the more ride or dance and profitable routes and plan for the economic reality that the ARPA funds are running out. A vacuum exists between the board and most departments. What do they do? Not identifying new riders and engaging current low local riders and consistent communication with its board of directors. Now, I think um, these surveys were filled out before we came to do the strategic planning. And I would assume that many of you would amend those weaknesses, having been here yesterday and listened to the reports that the staff was able to present to you. Um, that the talk about the different kinds of communication and certainly in terms of being proactive, in terms of looking at what the future looks like and how to meet the needs of the future. Um, the um, presentation that Ken did this morning on design thinking and where the agency is going. Okay, so uh, looking at that, I would really like you to pick out um, the top areas that you think need um, attention and um, further, further examination. And that we uh, narrow that list from what you did before you had the opportunity to have some of the education that we've had um, yesterday and today. So if I could open it up to you as a group and have you talk about now what you think are some of the top priority areas that you would want to examine when it came to weaknesses and let's try to identify um, three or four. Yes.
Would you recommend focusing on weaknesses that we believe to be true irrespective of our role as board members? Or weaknesses that we may actually be able to help solve, such as the very last one, consistent communication with its board of directors members?
Okay, that's a great question. Um, I think what we're trying to identify here is what are the areas that you think need to have the most attention paid to? For uh, regardless of it's something that the board can can help with or something that the agency can go out and do. I think uh, it's not either or, it's kind of both. And so what I would do is say, if we're trying to identify, um, if it, for instance, if you're trying to do self-improvement, right? You can list fifty things that you need to change about yourself, that you wish were different or that you wanna improve or skills that you wanna add. Okay, but ultimately it comes down to saying, where do I need to put my strongest empathi- emphasis in terms of of taking the things that need to be done and improving? And so that's what I'm asking you to do in this case is to actually look at picking out three to five items where you think, can this is where emphasis needs to be placed? We think there are some weaknesses in this area. And we need to see what it is that can be done, and then we can flesh that out further. But if you could um, give me an idea of what you see as some of those very top level areas to concentrate on.
I think we could combine several of these, you know, I I think we we need to address core. You'd focus on on the core first. So the core would be funding, uh, personnel, HR as a category, which comes up a lot in here.
Yeah.
Uh, vacancies, morale, uh, which which those are related. And then understanding the customer and understanding our changing customer, uh, the barriers and incentives. Uh, because our cheese is moving, you know, uh, as Chris pointed out this morning at breakfast, we're talking about the impact of telework. And 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 that's changed patterns. Uh, so so we need to be flexible enough to recognize those changes and 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 I'm not saying this was a board issue, this is a, this is a operations issue. But we need to be aware of it and and assist where we can, but um, I think those are really the core issues. So it's customer, HR, funding, um. You know, help me out. I I think there was maybe one more in there, but I I think, I think all of these could fit into those categories.
And as you noticed, um, there are lots of bullets. This is verbatim what you said in your in your responses so that everyone could see themselves and and what they reported and see what everybody else reported. And so that's why we really need to pull that in tighter now to see what we need to look at. And so um, Chairman Sutton indicated that funding would be one of the areas, personnel or HR, which would include vacancies and hiring and understanding customer needs as three. Is there anything you'd like to add to that list, Mr. Ron?
I I think it's about the same. I didn't cut you off, though. No, go ahead. I think it's about the same. For me, my definitions would be funding. Number two, like as number one by far. Number two would be workforce challenges is actually what I would define that as. Because I think that addresses both internal and external problems that we're dealing with. And then I defined the third one as transit for the future or transit of the future, which is really, once we've identified immediate funding concerns, how do we make sure we're looking at what our business model needs to be for the next decade of transit? But perhaps that's too broad, so obviously we can't.
Okay, and so the changes that.
Really important.
Okay, go ahead.
My written and verbal survey is sort of an embrace of the future, an attitude of the future. Um, it, David and I had a talk this morning about sort of first mile, last mile, and it's not of like, there's a predefined answer, but it's like asking these questions and thinking about um, things that people do today that they didn't do ten years ago, and what is the interaction between the bus and the scooter and the bike and the, you know, so um, I'd like to hear more of that.
Yeah, well, I mean, for young people too, like if we look at industry adjacent statistics, like the fact that the youngest generation now is the lowest rate so far of actually getting their driver's licenses. That might be a quote unquote weakness or an interesting fact of that generation, but that's a huge value for us, right?
So that's gonna fall under like opportunities, right? And that kind, yeah.
True, but 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 a mindset of building that transit for the future, I think that.
Okay, and and the the business model for moving forward.
Those folks, so like they're not all low income, they're choosing not to get a driver's license. And it's about how do you make the bus an attractive option versus spending a fortune on Uber, but they're young, broke and fabulous and spending a fortune on Uber. So they're like, it's a thing, and I think like that is not the customer of the past, like understanding that is really important. And I think sometimes big organizations, but when I run, the one Kent's run, it's just like very trapped in the status quo, which is fine, because they're like great at the status quo.
So the, um, I wanna get this to a weakness, you know, from from the extraneous examples to the weakness. So the weakness is is being able to be um, setting up a plan that recognizes the changing customer um, needs and um, wants um, to be able to meet that in terms of a plan. Is that, is that pretty close to what I'm hearing?
I think the weakness is it feels like we are not well empowered to be able to plan for that.
Okay, and by we, are you talking about you as a board or are you talking about the organization?
Is the royal we.
Royal is the organization, all right? It's now the royal we, in case you wondered. Okay, so. Okay, and so um, in terms of um, is that saying that there's more information that still needs to be given to you to know what the agency is doing for planning? I think in Ken's design thinking proposal, he told you one of the ways that they're doing that planning for the future in terms of of looking into this, I think um, as the um, different members of the executive management team talked and they talked about their initiatives and priorities, many of them included as part of that um, that planning for the future. And so my my issue here is to define this better, okay, in terms of a weakness. Because I think we see things that have been presented to you yesterday and today on how the agency is planning for the future and what specific steps is taking in initiatives in doing that. And I wanna know how you phrase the the weakness of that.
Well, that was lovely, but that was the only time we hadn't heard that. So I think that was a great start, but I think the perception, just because speaking for myself, I think the perception is that that I don't know that that's fully embraced across the organization or that that work is happening or or that that value is infused across the workforce, and I could be wrong. But it's still like concerned.
Okay.
Agency is not.
Okay, and so I wanna, I again, I just want, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. I'm really trying to be real careful about that. So part of it is how workforce is in 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 vested in the future and what is yet to come. Okay? And then as part of it, what you're talking about actually communication, rather than some of these other things is is the weakness um, needing more communication on what is happening?
Communication and we're not gonna do the work, but think back, I mean, a presentation to the board, like here is five big themes that we're looking at demographically and in terms of the future, and here's our role model of the future customer and are we on the right track? Do you have thoughts as a board to think about this or think about that differently? You know, we're not gonna micromanage the work, but I think hearing about it more than once a year and getting some feedback. I don't mean, I don't, probably you've said similar things, so I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but what do you think?
No, I I I completely agree with what has been uh, shared, beginning with David and Randy and you. Um, my my perception and my personal experience is that we don't get those reports back.
Okay.
And I've uh, on numerous occasions said, how do we identify the future writer? Because the pre-pandemic writer doesn't really exist anymore. Um, you brought up a great point about the youth, right? How is it that? And I know it's it's gonna sound like a silly example, but it's really, it's 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 a true example. Um, how did Taylor Swift have, no, nine concerts at SoFi? And those metro trains and buses were packed. Packed. We need to identify those writers and learn more about them. There's a, there's a rider that goes southbound with me and only to hop off in downtown and to hop on the blue line back uptown. My question is, why didn't that rider get off at Del Amo and then go to the A-line? Why didn't that rider get off at Willow, Wardlow, PCH or Anaheim? And go to the blue line? Why did that rider go all the way to downtown to hop on the blue line from downtown when he could have gotten it closer? My idea, and I plan to ask him next time because I feel like sometimes I don't think the outreach is done the way that I would do it. My idea is that maybe LBT, first of all, LBT has a great um, reputation. It's clean, the buses are clean. Blue Line seventy-one is not that crowded. So it's probably more, and it's also more convenient for that rider. And it's probably faster than a metro bus. That's my question. How do we identify those riders?
And and is it a piece of educating the rider as well? About options?
But I also, well, I I can't imagine, I mean, I'm making an assumption that the rider knows how to get to the A-line from all these other stops going southbound. Because our riders are not, that, I believe our riders are informed.
Okay.
Um, these are hardworking class people who work two jobs, three jobs. They know, right? They're savvy. So what makes that rider stay on LBT?
Okay. So it's not only identifying future riders, but how do we outreach to those future riders?
Right.
Okay.
They keep them.
Okay, other comments?
I I think one of the things that we we've, the reason, purpose of the workshop was open the lines of communication, get more information than we can get at a board meeting. And and I think this has been great, it's been a great exercise. But I think ongoing, instead of having reports come to us at the board level all the time, it would be nice to have a dashboard that we can go to and get information. We could see, and I I don't know what the legal ramifications of it are, those kinds of things, but to to get some basic information on on-time performance on on uh, just the general stats on ridership, um, uh, number of list outs, number, you know, those kinds of uh, facts that would kind of give us a level of, oh, we're hitting the mark or we're not hitting the mark. Where are we weak, you know? So so we we could see something ongoing and live that that we wouldn't have to rely on a, on staff taking three months to prepare a report to us on a particular topic. Maybe there's some broad key indicators that we could, that we could get a picture of, to get a glimpse of how Long Beach is doing and what is the health of the organization.
Okay, and so the weakness is that there is a need for a way to get more timely information rather than wait for reports to get some of the informa- I I I wanna bring it that down to the, what the weakness is.
Involve staff with reports as long as we're getting the core information that we need on a regular basis, you know? I I'm trying to, I I'm trying to uh, get staff off the hook because as a government worker, I know what it takes to put a report together. And it is a lot of work and and it's, it's, you know, if if I said today I want something in thirty days, that that means a staff person has to be together in a week to get it.
Through all the proper processes, I, I know that.
It's not thirty days, it gets, so, so then ninety days looks like reasonable period of time. Well, a lot can change in ninety days. So, so a lot of the data can change in ninety days. So I, I'm just looking for something that's a little more in real time.
Well, David, don't you think that data would be helpful to the leadership team?
Absolutely.
Here at LBT, if there was a dashboard that said, you know, like, is ridership up or down this month? Yes, what are we achieving on these five days?
Is that seasonal? Are we doing a lot of mishaps or do we have a lot of vacancies? I mean, what's, what are those impacts? I know it's affecting.
Like I know we're, we're not elected officials, but in other agencies, folks get one-way information all the time, which is allowed under the Brown Act, memos, data.
Sir, is there a dashboard that can be created that allows the board members to just kind of look at it?
Okay, so I don't know if you want to have that be something that your IT department discusses with them to answer that question. I, I certainly can't answer that question for them. The question.
Is there some sort of dashboard to obtain the information? Buy the information that's available, like, in airline business, right? For us, that, that, that's our life. You know, basically if you have, uh, uh, on, on, on time arrivals or delays of weather impacted, this day, yeah. So we have regular live, like, information across the entire network about how we're doing in terms of that. Is there some similar dashboard that either already has, will be created that could be accessible to the board members? That, that you, you probably get it, the, your operators, your executives probably get it. But is this something that we can get?
Um, we can look at what you want, yes. It would be ludicrous for us to run an organization and don't have KPIs of what it is. How would I know half of the things I'm seeing here? If we don't have that, that goes all the way down to the, so we have analysts in each department and we have those things. And every quarter, we have our quarterly KPI numbers. Monthly, I get every month what is going on, sometimes daily, it depends on what it is. Like how, and I make sure once a week I get an update and what's, you know, that. So it'd be impossible to run an organization without that. We could come up with what are the, because to me, we have maybe a hundred, maybe twenty different things we look at. Um, in each department, we have measures, we can come up with what it is that we want to see that would give us a health of the organization. Because in the airline, you don't look at everything. You don't see everything out there. You see, okay, takeoff, landing, on time. So they have measures that you bring up, the ten or twelve measures that you bring in. Okay, what, what we would think with those measures that we'd like to see everyone.
Yeah, ours is large, like you can actually, like you know how LAX is doing in comparison to DFW, you know, and so, so the entire system, and people's performance evaluation is dependent on that. So there's a motivation to make sure that the agents are turning the planes around and what have you. So, so I think there's an interest, there's some, board members have a greater interest in the regular information, or some of it doesn't, just the question is, is, is there a way to share that information with the board members? For those who are interested in it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you can come up with what it is, if you want to look at the ten, twelve measures.
Yeah, I mean, something that doesn't overburden, uh, yeah, so that's already pre-existing that can be plugged into, to an existing, um, so I measure, I can't, I can't run the audit of the audit measures. It's impossible. My mind is can't move right now. So I, I think it's coming up with what do we see, are there ten or twelve things that we want going on? I have on-time performance by achieving things that we look at and what's happening. Um, it's important when we look at those things, they're various, you know, you don't, you don't. Yes, we can look at it. I can look at what it is, if that's one thing you want, number fifteen.
You and David can sit down. For the. So maybe the executive staff, I mean, the executive committee and you can sit down and craft something that.
We come up with a half, half list, what are the ones we want to look at, ten or twelve things? And if we believe that ten or twelve doesn't, what might be fifteen, I would like not to make it twenty-five, thirty measures.
But I, I sort of don't want to reinvent the wheel. If, if the information is already existing and it's just packaging it in a way that is useful, that tracks.
Okay, and I, go ahead.
We have a, I have an executive summary that comes out of the hundred and something that comes to me. I can look at that and extract some of the end of the slide. I can get with the executive committee and we can talk, well, here's what we have. But I, I, I think I heard like, you know, how many failures we had on our bus. I, I think when we get into that, we get into the operations of the bus sales, you know, today and backs on the streets. So I would be very much looking at what we call quick level things that we would want to look at. Right? We have those things.
Yeah, I mean, I want to defer to the, to the executive committee to come up with whatever information and if, but.
I think that would be a great, coming for us to get.
And mind you, since you're already, your public agency, your G C's not here, a lot of that stuff is already public, in fact, you have it.
We have to report it to federal public.
Yeah, so it already exists, it's how you package it, that's all I mean by that.
So key operation, I'll get, we have to handle. We have to report it to the federal public right now.
Okay, I'm going to pull this back from the to-do list thing and really look at a, a higher level in terms of what are the priorities. And Mr. Kemp, you had a comment?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's interesting, if I can just, one thing, um.
And maybe you should come up here to be heard better. It's a little hard to hear you.
What, what I would, um, what I think, um, Director Angeles said is that I would like to hear that we agree that the executive committee and myself can sit down and talk about this, that we don't just throw it out and move on. If we agree, let's try and some point in time where we can talk and I could present my executive summary that I get. We can show you all of the, the KPIs and then we, because I, I don't know that I want to put out a hundred KPIs out there that everybody can go look at. You know, it's one thing in the board, but it probably gets into, this week is something, six months later, I'm dealing with something that we solved six months ago. I find that happening. So can we talk about getting together and coming up with the sort of corporate level list? Then you can share it with the rest of the board and see if there's something we need to add or subtract on that. That, I, I, I'm asking that we kind of agree to do that.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. Uh, you know, to that point, um, I, I agree. I, where I think I'd like to maybe differ a little bit is that I don't know that that conversation should be limited to the executive committee. I think that to get a sense for what those top ten, fifteen dashboard infographic with information things are, that puts a lot of pressure on two executive, uh, members to sort of think through the full conversation or remember all the things that were in the parking lot. And I think it could easily be done in a, you know, fifteen minute, twenty minute conversation with the full board and come up with, you know, what that list of things might be. That said, what I've heard kind of, um, as a theme these last couple of days is that there, uh, there's some strengthening that needs to happen in the communications department. And I think, you know, as a communications professional, it is probably easier than, than, um, you know, we're taking credit for, because it sounds, as, as, as I'm listening, like we are on the same page about a lot of things. We want some specific information, we have some specific information. Um, there's, there's a format question as to how, how we access that. Um, and I get it, I, you know, I've been on the, I've been on the staff side for most of my life. And so dealing with people like me is the headache I've lived. Um, so like, you're, you're going to have some people who want answers to questions all the time. Um, and then there, there are folks who, you know, you're going to have a dashboard and they'll look at it just before the meeting to, to be conversant. Um, so I think, you know, that's sort of a, a challenge from the staff side. But I think, you know, having a full board discussion, coming up with, you know, whatever the number is, I like ten. You know, ten to fifteen, you know, dashboard juicy bits, um, to describe what the health of the organization is, I think. We'll check a box in that communication opportunity space. Where next time we have one of these retreats, we'll be able to point to that and say, you know, there's, there's been this many engagements on the page and this is the information that's available to the board and the board is using it in this way. Uh, that will be able to be something that we, we raise again, um, I think. I assume if I have a specific question about what's going on with Long Beach Transit that is on that dashboard and not on that dashboard, I'll be able to call the staff and say, hey, what's up with X, Y and Z? I, I want some information about this. And they get that back in a timely fashion, because organizations, you know, operate. I think having it public to, um, you know, any point is, is not only a, a positive, um, opportunity for us to demonstrate how we compare to our competition. I know that if something happens with Port of Long Beach versus the Port of L.A., you hear it all the time on the news. That's not because their communications department is calling K and X. That's because K and X is going to the dashboard to get the information. Uh, so I think if, if it's already public as, as is described, and we have it in a format that's easily digestible. What was that?
Someone wants to, uh, yeah, join the conversation.
I mean, I'm gonna take that as a positive moment. My amen. But I think, I think if we have that someplace and people can look at it, it'll be a, a good marketing tool for us. But it'll also be a good accountability measure. So then for failing in some areas that need improvement, we don't want that out there for the public to see. And we're going to work to fix that quickly and say, oh, damn, we aren't communicating enough in Spanish. And, you know, the Spanish language folks are saying something about it and our metric is, the needle is moving towards the red. We got to put some more pedals to the metal over here and get the needle to move the other way, for example. That'll help us close that gap, but I think that, you know, um, this feels like, uh, a wrong, this communications thing just keeps coming along, so.
Then, and I'd like to, I'd like to take it at that point for a minute and just say, again, I don't want to get, okay.
If I could, um, I think it's, but I think it's easy to fix, is, is, is my point. I think it's, it's an easy, an easy box to check. So I think, again, just a, a dashboard with some, some collectively agreed upon metrics. And then if you want to have regular check-ins with the executive team to, to go from there, then groove. Because now we know all of our interests are being represented in that conversation.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize for the interruption.
So, so can I, can I just add two comments to that? One, I agree that, yes, we need to come up with the dashboard. Two, um, we have a board that really was designed that every four years we roll over. Our longest-serving member on this board right now is less than four years. Less than four years, so more, the turnover has been so high on this board. Because there are a lot of people that come to this board with the intent that they're going somewhere else. If I go down the list and show how many, how much change that have happened, we want a good organization. So yes, the reason I'm asking that we get with the, the second point to me is, why am I asking with the executive committee? It's real hard to get people together. I keep hearing, get the whole board together. We can even get a vote on the budget, the most important thing for the organization. So my point was get with the executive committee and they can, we can figure out how do we share that with the whole board? But if we wait to get the whole board, that always is how we ended up with the challenge for me, to be able to bring that later on. So yes, if we want to come up with a health of the organization dashboard, I really think that we should start with the executive committee and then figure out with that executive, how do we get the whole board? And they can add or subtract from that, but it's hard to get the whole board together.
Well, I think the good news is, we have the whole board together right now. So I think if we're talking about strengths and weaknesses and we want to dedicate fifteen minutes to come up with fifteen things for the dashboard, that would be a good use of our time right now, today, to get a sense for what the high priority issues are that we might like to see on the dashboard. And then you can take that to the executive committee and perhaps refine it if we run out of time for that discussion. But if we're having a SWAT conversation, this is, I think, an opportunity to do that. So we don't have to say, we can't get the board together, because you got the board right now.
Um, it's a important decision, not my, I think.
Would anybody be opposed to having a conversation for ten minutes about what the top ten things on the dashboard?
Not at all. I'm not sure if stuff's prepared, but I also, I mean, I have to say, I appreciate that past experience, but I don't particularly appreciate an assumption that the board going forward can do the work. So I think that whether today or at a future meeting, the board could do the work, there's a compromise and can meet with the executive committee and bring something back for everyone's feedback. I mean, I think there's a way to get there.
I, I, I think to satisfy Director Kemp's idea, we could spend fifteen minutes talking about why we shouldn't do this now. Or we could just do it. So I, I'm not opposed to just go ahead, let's just do it and let's just stick it.
We had a facilitator.
Why don't you just pick one of your pages up here or we'll go over here, bring the easel over and, and let's just list ten or fifteen items and I think we could do that in five minutes and get on.
Second.
Okay, maybe we take five minutes less for breaks if we need.
But this is, yeah, I know, but this is that special thing. I don't think it would hurt anything, but. Do you have any concern about being derailed, Allo? Or are you okay with just one head? All right, all right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I think the SWAT is capturing very well.
All right, let's go.
All right. I got it, set to go.
And I never look at it, so.
I think I would start with the current vacancies.
Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
I, I would start with the number of current vacancies across the organization.
And this is internal, like we, we just pronounced it for the public.
Once he gets it to us, it's, it's a public document.
So ridership and demographics.
Ridership numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
And who's writing?
That's your demographics that you're talking about, right?
On time, slash, miss sounds.
I think those are two different things.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, and we're just playing stories.
Right? So do you want accidents, incidents? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that would be good. Part of that risk.
All right.
Also, no, I'm saying thing, but may frame it a different way, safety metrics, same thing. Because folks who went to the Taylor Swift concert feel sick. That demographic needs to feel sick when it's not Taylor Swift, at least.
And then, uh, revenues, right, current revenues. Uh, non-day, uh, partial payment, things like that.
Pay revenues.
Big customer transaction. That makes you live the best.
This could be, um, a customer comment cards, right? Things like that. I'm trying, I'm trying to think of something that happens daily, uh, as opposed to survey, but.
Maybe quarterly, not, not a monthly, but like employee turnover?
No, it's not just the number of vacancies.
Okay.
An organization could be like constantly hiring and constantly losing people. An understanding of churn.
Okay.
Like there's a huge operator churn.
Okay.
I understand that, you know, some of these on the dashboard, it's, it would be seasonal, so it's not going to change every single day. But, you know, things related to our, uh, sustainability efforts that, you know, highlight how much we're helping to clean the environment.
Okay, so the zero emission efforts, is that what you mean by sustainability?
Yeah, yes.
So there, now that there are standards, it's basically, we can figure out what are the standards that we are, the environmental standards that we create. Basically, we, we can figure out what are the standards that we are, the environmental standards that we measure or already measuring. And identify some, a section that has some sort of sustainability.
Yeah, there's a calculator. The C O two.
But some safe metrics that are. They give us some.
It's, it's a C O two what?
It's, the idea is bigger than that, right? It's. We might, they might have to spend some time fixing out what are the sustainability measures that they currently have. We're missing getting this written down. So that particular line. The concept there is that we, we wanna identify what are potential sustainable. Indicators.
It could be not just related to how well our machines are running, but how few are coming, how many few on machines. From people on the streets are not running because they're on our well-running machine. How do you measure all that?
Okay.
They're reported.
Okay.
So, is it anybody's job in the agency? Is that anybody's job in the agency? Do we have this no sustainability officer at the moment?
Yeah, it's, and, uh, health and safety, health is, is, that's where it's sustainability.
You do have one.
In this case, it's be hard. Be responsible for safety and.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, there is a position, environmental health and safety that is responsible. Person just. Retire, um, resigned a couple, two weeks ago, we're in a percent of trying to refill the position right now.
So like that person, some of those work, the thing.
Okay, yes.
Uh, like service reliability, I don't know if I see anything on here, like mean distance between failure, that sort of thing.
So, um, so not only the on-time, um, portion, but.
Yeah, I think on-time is different than how far does each one average before a mechanical failure. That's.
Okay. Okay, so.
Yeah, it is M D B F.
And just to kind of calibrate where my thinking is. Like, I'm trying to think of it from a. Marketing and branding perspective, to be honest, to be like, what is going to be of interest? For the public, assuming that this is not a diaphragm that's gonna just rest with us, but it has by law would be viewed by the public. What are those things that are going to tell our story in a way that makes those folks understand who we are and then ride our, our buses?
Okay, is there, um, is there a metric in there that you want me to define?
That's a really important.
Yeah.
Same. For me, I'm trying to capture a holistic perspective, good and bad. Uh, where we're at, and if we suddenly see a number like, well, why have our breakdowns gone through the roof? That's something. Without having to wait.
Okay.
No, no.
Ken, do you wanna address what some of the metrics are that you typically look at the most?
Good question.
So ridership, yes, that's something we do constantly. Demographics, we do that when we do our, this is not a monthly. This is a. On our service. When we do our service, we look at the demographic, on-time performance is measured every regularly, accidents. And, um, fear revenue, that is done on a weekly basis. And customer satisfaction is not measured every week, is not a weekly, we have the two timeline. I heard M D, mean distance between failure, M D V F, we measure that. We, so it's actually. It's the M D V F, mean distance between failures.
Okay.
M D V F. Um, thank you. We. Operator availability is a thing that we keep regular check on where.
And, and, and by that.
I'm afraid you're gonna step on that.
That's all right, thank you.
So some of it are, are available regularly, some of it are. When we do our, our, uh, customer, this would not be something we get. So.
This one?
Yeah, demographics is not something, but most of the, uh, on our cu- current.
Well, you know how many people are, are writing as a senior? You know how many people are writing as students? There, there is some information there.
Okay, maybe one.
He's talking about what, what he has regularly on the report that they are already generating versus a.
Item that would be available, that, that's data coming in every day, so through your fair box.
Uh, okay, if you say so, okay, um, but zero emission, I, I didn't get this one. Zero emission, what?
Um, the C O two equivalent, what you're doing on sustainability indicators, carbon?
Oh. Okay, that doesn't change a lot, but okay, we, we do look at that. Or changes we put electric vehicles, the difference between that, what we were doing with a C O T, C O two vehicle. Um, there are some of it that are pretty easy to put together. Uh, I would say the demographics is still an issue about how we get there. The full demographics of the organization and then what happened, what, looking at this, but. Employee turnover. Yes, we look at that. Kind of going with the vacancies that we have.
Senior student. And then payment type, whether they're, like, you know, whether they're using a pass or tap or cash.
Yeah.
You also put like a star on the ones that, uh, Ken said are easy to do.
Okay, so go ahead, Ken.
We can start with that one.
Alright.
Ridership. Um, on-time performance. Um, accidents and incidents that could be, yes, fear revenues. Um, the M D V S. Operator availability.
Six, seven, that's seven. Are there other ones that you track on a regular basis that you would like to, that you would suggest adding so that they would? Look at?
Um. Off the top of my head, I have my book that I look at every, that, what we have, but these are some things that I look at constantly.
About a real liability one, do you have a, like, field service, uh, breakdown, kind of, you know?
Um, he has bu- bus availability every day. We have to, we have a bus availability reported, daily bus availability. Just like we have op, cause first you need the bus and then you need the operator, so having this bus availability is a daily report.
Right, road trips. Road service, I don't know what you call it.
Do we really need that at this level? I don't even look at that, but if we need to do it, I don't look at those things. Look at the outcome of the monitor.
Get there too. I don't know if there's anything, customer satisfaction sort of kind of gets to it, safety measures.
Well, we have accidents and incidents, that's the safety.
Oh, incidents.
And she put safety measures.
Sometimes less is more. I think this is a good boost.
Okay, so we can take off demographics since it isn't something they check on a regular changing basis. Is that a consensus of the group?
Yeah.
As long as you answer it, I'm okay.
I was hoping that you could tell us what demographics you might have. We could still go off the list, but be good to know what we do have.
Well, you get it when we do our, our, um, survey. We're gonna do surveys twice a year now, so we will look. To me, that's real data as opposed to. The other ones.
Yeah.
That you, how you can get it.
I think leaving it under is good, because to, to the earlier conversation this morning, uh, you know, at the. Bagel table and to, you know, the Taylor Swift angle, like. Being able to see what not just the ethnic demographic is, but the. Um, economic demographic and, and how effective we are being, kind of like twice a year and transforming, um. You know, our service to those people, valuable, and I think that is valuable for us, but assuming the public's gonna see it too. Valuable for them to see too, because if they see that, for example, you know, uh, what do you call it? Sexy, broke and fabulous or.
Young, broke and fabulous.
Yeah, so it, it, like, it, it, if they see that there's a growing community of the young, broken, fabulous happening on our bus lines. That's gonna attract more to, to participate in the team. Or pick a demographic. So I like to keep it on, I think, so. But I also agree that this is a good listing. I think we probably.
Well, is, is this something that, that can come to you as a report versus a dashboard? Because it happens only a couple times a year, then that would be part of a reporting system, not part of a dashboard, because the rest are all pretty. You know, current numbers, and so is that something that twice a year you can receive as a board as a report?
So I, I would, I would, I would suggest this. It doesn't have to be on the dashboard, but I think, you know, it should be on the website. I think it should be someplace where it can be accessed by the public, because I think it's useful to give folks a snapshot of what the organization is. It's kind of typical across institutional boards, as far as I've experienced the board, Long Beach City Councilor and report our, our demographics, so it helps you understand. Who we are.
Okay, Ken?
Um.
And I'm just trying to get this to what goes on the dashboard and what doesn't go on the dashboard and.
So we did, hello, we did. Discussion with the executive committee and.
Yeah.
Bring it back for further discussion with the board.
We need to today.
We made good partners.
Okay.
Great job, guys. Swifties.
Keep working.
Swifties. Are you a Swiftie?
Oh, yeah.
Nope, I'm just gonna slide it back here because we may need it again. Alright, so. Oh, yeah, thank you. I didn't turn around and look, so further back yet. Thank you so much. Okay, so. Um, going back then to the weaknesses and, and having it as the top level three to five. The ones that I've heard suggested so far are funding, um, workforce challenges and or P R H R. Um, understanding customer needs, which includes identifying future riders or retention of riders. Um, communication and, um. Transit of the future, the business model moving forward. Okay, so a need for those is the weaknesses.
Can I ask a question about, there's a weakness here that says preparing for electrification. How, how is that a weakness and can anybody help me with that? How do you, are this preparing for electrification? How is that a weakness? What, or what is the?
I didn't say that, but I think the weakness is the infrastructure with respect to what you have to be able to get ready for electrification, right? It's, I had the conversation about like whether Edison or whether the infrastructure of having. You can have, you can buy as many buses as you want, but if you can't charge them, let's, let's, let's just point out buses and. The trend certainly on the personal level, Tesla, and the, the E Vs are going down simply because one, the convenience of it. But because they don't have the infrastructure and then having to wait. For buses to charge in order to get them on the road as opposed to just gassing them up and going.
And it was great to hear you aren't having challenges, but I was kind of surprised because.
That's.
Our customers at the port, so folks trying to do electric trucking. It's been a nightmare because we, the city and the port and car, they're all telling them to do electric trucks. And then Edison is telling them they can't, they just won't, can't provide the power. And then they go to order the equipment and it's a thirteen to fifteen monthly time on the equipment. It's like insane and then, you know, we, mean city and mean car are telling them, well, sorry about all those things, but you have to use electric trucks. So it's, uh, like the whole ecosystem, the whole system is broken. Because people cannot address the infrastructure need, so I was delighted to hear you not having problems. But that is very unique, so I hope there's some plan to keep it going.
Okay.
Because, so, um.
So you will have problems.
So the question.
Okay, hold on a second.
The question we won't have in problem with is the power company, not the equipment you mentioned, everybody's having that problem. We used to be able to get equipment a year, now it takes us eighteen months to twenty-two months to see the same equipment. So I didn't talk about that part of it. I said that I don't, I haven't had any problem with the power companies yet.
But it's connected, right? So then, a lot of times the environmental policies you hear. But then it's got no support with respect to reality, right? I mean, I'll give you an example for us, we're forced to use sustainable aviation fuel as an airline. But there's no producers in the way of your fuel.
Right.
But yeah, government keeps telling you you have to do it, right? So there's like, well, we can, we'll buy millions and millions of gallons of this stuff if you guys produce it, there's no producers.
So, okay, then the, what I'm thinking, I am hearing here, this is. The, uh, ability to electrify the system, it says preparing for electrification. I don't think we have a problem or weakness preparing for it. But there are some challenges with implementing it, so.
I think the preparation, you know, I mean, the busing part, I think what we can control is easy on our end. The fear of the weakness is, is whether. The other components of the infrastructure will be ready for.
My only question is really, maybe it should be as an obstacle or some challenge, but it's not a weakness. I, I don't see that as a weakness in the organization. Preparing for electrification is not a weakness for us.
Yeah.
But, but the abil- the ability to deliver is an obstacle. And how, what it is we're gonna do to measure to address those obstacles, right? But not, I don't see this under, um. As a weakness to the organization, preparing for it. I see it as a strength, you know, because we are way ahead of most people, but there are a lot of industry issues. You know, you mentioned them about the parts, about getting the equipment, you know, car, every week you, you know, you change something, funding. Those things, but preparing for make it happen, I think that's the real strength of our organizations.
Consensus and agreement?
Yes.
Great. Okay, let's move on to, um, obstacles. The ones that were brought up in the written survey were labor relations, and there were two respondents who said that. Too many executives, salary savings, staff retention, turnover, losing bus operators and hiring challenges, and that was almost universal. Preparing for the transportation needs for the twenty twenty-eight Olympics, planning for the revenue fiscal cliff. Fear that because there are currently funds to run at the status quo, it may delay necessary challenges. Financial challenges with federal and state funding, and there were three responses to that. The ability to empower the organization to do more with less, the need to make service changes. Increasing efficiency while reducing costs, providing more routes and services with limited financial resources. And then, again, preparing for electrification. Okay, discussion on the obstacles.
At the risk of being impolite, I just think the labor relations obstacle is huge. And that should be in the consensus list of top obstacles, and I think that. Our labor relations, past, present, and future. Really soured the agency's relationship with the city. The legislature, and if this is an agency that needs money and help. It's not helpful to sour your relationship with the people that have the money and the help. So it's not just that there's like a poor relationship between management and staff. It's that it's created a. Cascading impact in the intergovernmental political world. That I'm not sure is fully appreciated, but that's just me speaking for myself.
I wasn't aware of the bigger picture in respect to what you just said, but.
There's nine city council members, when I talked to them and asked them for concrete feedback about what they want from L B T. None of them can tell me anything other than their grievances about the relationship between the. none of them can tell me anything other than their grievances about the relationship between the agency and its employees. And it's not just about the pay. It's about the sick leave policy that apparently is going to go to arbitration. It's about a general belief that there's a poor relationship between the agency and its staff.
Thank you. Thank you. I personally don't feel that that's impolite or inappropriate. I think that's, we can't say on the same sheet of paper that our greatest strength is our people and then also have one of our numbers to speak. The relationships with said people. So me personally, I would welcome having that.
Okay. So labor relations, okay, as being one of the top obstacles. Additional comments?
I actually feel like this is probably categorized already into the top two or three. Because I agree and I echo the concerns around the labor relations huge. And it underneath that, several of these others associated with, you know, the number of executives, executive salary, that shouldn't even probably even be on there, but it's on there. I think because of the relations, the staff retention and turnover, that's all under labor for me. And then to some extent connected to that is what we're calling our revenue or fiscal cliff, which is probably the second matter, but labor is part of that. So that would be the other theme that I see out of this. And if the revenue or fiscal cliff is sort of the second theme, then I think the financial challenges from, you know, not receiving additional funds from the federal government, the changes that would need to be made to services accordingly, efficiency and reducing costs are all part of, you know, and a couple of the others are part of that second theme. And then I, I noticed the term prepar- preparing for electrification. For me, you know, I don't know who wrote that, but part of what I'm seeing as the theme there is from an environmental sustainability set of efforts. What's our, you know, what's our strategic plan around that? What are the efforts? Is it electric? Is it hydrogen? Is, you know, whatever else it is out there? So what is? How, how do we get there if we also have this financial cliff? In terms of being able to have the resources and then the vision to, to see that through. Though to me, this obstacle section kind of wrote itself. It's just a matter of taking, I think, those three themes.
Again, these are all the responses. So it's collecting it into, you know, many of them fall under the same categories is what you're talking about. And so what I've heard so far is labor relations would be one of those. Planning for the revenue fiscal cliff, all the financial things would be a second one. Okay. And then the third would be the sustainability plan that takes in all the electrification, the hydrogen, those things. Am I correct in those three?
Can I ask a question? And so this just says labor relation. Is that positive or negative? What, what is the?
Like negative.
Yeah, you know.
That there's a negative relationship in our organization with the unions?
Yes.
Really? Based on? Based on what? I'm just asking in clarity, for clarity.
Protracted negotiations based on frequent complaints, based on those unions then applying pressure to the larger federation of labor, to members of legislature, members of a city council, what perceived right or wrong is very poor labor relations in this organization.
Christopher, every union does that.
Okay, Ken.
But I'm just saying when we.
If like we can be honest with.
What I'm saying is not, is not, this is not dishonesty or honesty. I'm just saying that's unions, the way they operate. A union going to the body and, and making a statement is a practice of, of the way the union operate. So I don't know that that's a good judgment to say that because the union came and said that we had bad relationship with the, with the company, that that is bad relationship with the company. A protracted union negotiation, I, I think after we finished the negotiation, we had great conversations with, I had great conversation with the union. Yes, we have to somewhere deal with what we, what I am dealing with as the org, as the leader of the organization. But I don't just, it could have very negative on the other side if I just say, whatever the unions say they want, I just give them. And so therefore we can cut the union protracted negotiation to two weeks because McDonald's said yes to everything. So I, I, I'm, I'm not.
I don't think it's binary like that. And I'm just telling you that different organizations have different reputations and different relationships with their labor group. And that this is a, is a point of tension and you don't have to agree. I'm just answering your question.
Yeah.
So I would absolutely agree with that. I've also had, you know, direct conversations regarding the protracted negotiations and the feelings that people have had about, people and unions have had about the organization. I think the question that I was hoping that you would ask today is what can be done? Because whether you believe or agree that such intensity exists negatively so among the staff and or unions, the hope is that we want to focus on how do we overcome that perception of real in your mind or not. So that's what I'd rather focus on. And clearly several of the board members have placed this on the agenda in conversation. So it has to be considered that there may be some truth in what others may be experiencing or feeling with the organization.
I don't know. I have to. I hear what you're saying. I, I don't know that I have to. I said, where I think we are. It's surprising to hear that we are saying that we have. That's what negotiations does. So, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and it is true. Sometimes in negotiations, you know, there's one of the things that I would love for us to consider, and I think it has to be considered in order for us to overcome this, is that there's a way that we come to the negotiation table. And depending on how we come to the table, not that we necessarily come with an agreement, but the way that we show up at the table can have an impact on the perceptions about what this negotiation process is like or about, it could be once it's over. What we know for sure now is that, yes, it's settled. But how we showed up at the table could also have a lasting impact on what happens after.
I would say this period, now that there's a contract, your ability to improve overall morale and communication with employees and their representatives is going to set the table for negotiations in three years. And if half of your employee, your operators are leaving within their first three years of service, there is a problem. So it's a little bit shocking. But I appreciate your perspective, but it's a little bit shocking to hear that you don't think there's a problem.
I, I don't think that there is a problem or negative relationship with the unions. That's what I'm saying. There are problems.
And we use. We use the term labor relations. Unions are part of that. I think that there are others who, outside of unions as well with the organization. And I agree with just with what you said, Chris, because this is why I also said we're done with the negotiations. You know, the question now is what can we do to try and focus on improving the nature and sort of the, the aspect of that, of our relationship with labor within the organization.
And, and I totally agree. That's a two-way street. Tenor.
It is.
There is, there are bodies inside the company that wanted to decertify the union because they felt they, so there is something that they've been put on the organization that there are members in the union that wanted to decertify both unions. They sent a petition around, I made sure I stayed out of, to decertify them. So there are challenges inside the union themselves that they have to deal with also. So I'm not saying that they are not relationships that can be improved, but all of it is not the company.
But you can control, you know, you can control how you show up to the table is what we're asking.
I one hundred percent agree. I control how I show up every time. But I get, I get what it said. I just wanted to make sure. It just said labor relation. So I heard what was said. I think that's, I wasn't being, I, I hope I'm not being taken defensive because I'm not, I truly am not being defensive. That's, it's a business we run here. So I'm not being defensive in what it just said, labor relation. I'm thinking is this positive or is this negative? What I heard is that it's negative from the board. Okay. I, I do want to ask one other question that has to do with too many executives.
Just going to bring that up.
I don't know who said that, but as an executive at a different entity, I disagree with that. I like, you have to run the organization. So that was not my comment, but I think.
You received a report yesterday that said that the cost for the executive administration of this organization is one of the lowest. I, I've heard of eight percent. And so I was going to ask if that wanted to be removed from here, given the fact that the the executive rate for this organization is far less than most organizations and certainly most organizations of this size. But if not, if there's, if there's a question about that, then I wanted to address it because it didn't fall into any of the other things necessarily that you identified in this, other than planning for the fiscal cliff. But so what, what is your response to, to too many executives? Is that something that the board wants to bring up?
I don't think it's important in this exercise to clear items off of the list. I think it's important to, it's important to somebody on this board.
Right.
As they said. So, but the idea is that they either need more information about the executive structure. Maybe they got the information yesterday that they needed. Maybe they're satisfied with that. Or maybe this is just a, a question to always ask as, as agencies tend to grow in staffing. Because there's other programs and services that are offered, some of which are relevant and focused and others may be not so. So it's always a good question to ask as an executive, do I have too many officers? Could I get by with this? Right? So I, I respect purpose of having that statement on this list as we go forward. I, I don't think the exercise is to take things off.
Okay, and point well taken. What I heard you say is that there were three top areas here that you felt were obstacles and other things felt under those categories. One is labor relations. Another is planning for the revenue fiscal cliff, so funding. And then the third one is a sustainability plan. Yes.
I would just, based on the conversations, just add one more.
Okay.
Being nimble enough to address the user, the changing in user demographic. I don't know. I think that kind of sums up a lot of what.
So just that I understand, I think from what David said there, if we continue with this and it says there's an obstacle and we don't have a clarity on what it is, it says salary savings. So that all, to me, that means we reduce the number of leadership, too many executive salary savings. I would, and that's why I was trying to get clarity. Is that saying that one of the obstacles that we should over the next two years be reducing the salaries, getting salary savings from?
I, I didn't write it, but I respect the idea of having it on there. That's what I'm getting at. And I think, I, I think what you can get out of that is to, to always be mindful of salaries. You're, we're mindful of labor salaries because they come up every three years. But we should also be mindful of our executive salaries, right? And, and comparison of benefits and things like that. I, I think it's an exercise that we should go through. And that's why I'm defending the right for that statement.
Yeah, I, 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 um, maybe I, I didn't, I wasn't clear on what I was saying is that the question seems to say salary savings. What you just said to me is clarifies a lot in terms of, yes, we should keep it on and keep an eye. Yes. Yeah. This, but this is the document that would stay on going on. So is this, is there clarity we should put on it?
salaries of executives will have the same problem that you have possibly with operators not staying. So you, you want a good core of people that stay with you for their career, right? I mean, so that they have this equity in the system. You know, you want it to be an attractive place to work.
I don't think I'm disagreeing with that. I'm just saying this document is going to live on and it says.
Everyone was asked to anonymously fill out a survey and then this is the result of this survey. Now you're having a debate with David about someone else's comment and removing their comment.
I'm not.
Good use of time.
But somehow I have to get clarity because I'm the one who has to work on this.
How is David going to give you clarity?
All I'm trying to get, all I was trying to make sure that I understand walking away from here, if the next two years we're going to work on these things, that salary savings and too many executives, I, I just trying to get clarity. I'm not saying that maybe it's not, I don't need the person, but if the whole group believes that what David is saying there is that what we need to look at, then I'm in agreement with that. But I wasn't quite clear, just like I asked in the first question, labor relation. What I heard is negative. I could have walked away thinking it was positive.
Yes, it's under obstacle.
Okay, we leave it. I don't know what to do with it, but we can leave it. But I mean, I didn't ask to take it off. I was just caring for clarity.
Okay, and so, and that was my misstatement. So we have labor relations, we have planning for the revenue fiscal cliff, we have sustainability plan. And we had the addition of being nimble enough to address our user demographics and changes. Did I capture that correctly? Okay. Anything else for the obstacles? These are difficult conversations, there is no question, but they're important conversations to have because it defines the perspective that each of you bring to the table when it comes to also finding solutions. Okay, the last one then is opportunities for growth. And the ones that were presented through the survey were ensuring the city of Long Beach works closely with Long Beach Transit to implement mobility solutions. Work with cities to increase micro mobility from high density corridors. Have cities enact complementary land uses along high ridership corridors. Coordinate with the city to develop alternative transportation options. Inglewood by the end of 2024 will have two large stadiums and two large concert venues close to Long Beach. Long Beach Transit can work with Metro LA and other municipal transit agencies. Last mile planning, and that's duplicated. And I, I think it might have been first mile planning, last mile planning. That's what I'm thinking. Okay, implementing new technology across the board, especially for optimizing routes. Empowering our teammates to move faster and get more work done in less time by leveraging technology. How will Long Beach Transit maximize the opportunity of the Olympics and connect people throughout the games? The World Cup 2026 and Olympics 2028, the creation of a greater vision for Long Beach Transit. Done correctly, the agency has the ability to adjust service to meet changing demands, help drive ridership growth and discontinue low ridership and low density service, and identify new riders and loyal riders post pandemic. Advocate for greater funding from all levels of government. Opportunities for growth. Yes.
Let me summarize quite a number of these. I would say at least five or six could probably be condensed into what I would define as strategic partnerships.
Okay.
City businesses, educational institutions. I'm not sure if we need to nail that out right now, but definitely strategic partnerships is, I think, number one because of how many different areas it addresses. And the second, based on what Josh said, actually in the obstacles, the word that came to mind when he was talking was agility, actually. Not just optimization. It's one thing to be optimized, but when you have a chaotic external state, you can't optimize for all those different states. What you need to focus on instead of optimization is agility and the ability to move fast and to shift direction as required. So my second, that I think also condenses quite a number of these, is agility through technology.
And is it solely through technology or is it agility in, in all of its forms?
I think the, the, the primary way that you. I think the, the, the primary way that you empower both the organization as well as specific teammates within the organization is through technology. If you're talking about optimizing routes, you need new tech. If you're talking about empowering teammates.
Agility through technology and change or?
Yes.
It's like, it's technology, but it's also an openness to doing things differently in my mind.
Yeah.
Which a technology is a tool, but it's also like about the mindset.
That's true. I mean, we could say agility through, we could say agility through innovation. We could also say agility through design thinking, if that's something that we want to do, but the reason why I, I started to narrow in on tech was because the realistic way through which you're going to achieve a number of these is with software for hardware.
Would you entertain agility through process improvements? Because that to me is what we're trying to do is be more agile with all processes and technology. So I could see process improvement and technology.
Yes, that works quite well, actually.
My thoughts about the word agility and where I was thinking you were going, not so much on the process and improvement side, but just still meeting with the technology. But based on the capturing of, of opportunity out here is the agility and meeting the needs of the customer and who they are and where they are. So that's the, the other component that I think is important with agility.
I couldn't agree more. I didn't verbalize that aspect of it, but the end result of being agile is so that you can meet those needs.
But not only is it the end result in our design thinking, it is we're putting, we're agile in our thinking regarding who would use our services when and why, based on a regional economy that we're connected to and where people need to be at certain times. And I, I keep in my mind, just so you all know what's happening inside on a little level, this, um, this last, you know, there's now WNBA more madness continuing. Caitlin was in town. The Indiana played the Sparks. And that game was supposed to be in Long Beach. But that game was not in Long Beach because the demand for the number of tickets that that game drew took them back to the Crypto Arena. As a result, being in town over the weekend and having gone to the game, I saw a lot of people who came to Indiana fans who were here in Long Beach looking to get around town and they stayed at Long Beach because the game was supposed to be here. Um, and so in that agile thinking around what are the regional influences and the kinds of folks who are going to be in town or in, in the vicinity or are going to need to use our services. It's where I was going with the agility and thinking about who are the people, where do they need to go and what is our regional economy giving us?
Yeah, I agree with that completely.
Okay. So how I, I took that and rephrased it, but I want to make sure that it's accurate is the agility to meet the needs of the customer through process improvement and technology.
I think the other bucket is empowering our workforce.
Right. Okay. But that's a separate one, correct? Yeah. Okay. So, but am I, I, I want to go back to this and was I accurate on that? Was I accurate on how I condensed that? I'll read it again. The ability, the agility to meet the needs of the customer through process improvement and technology. Is that what I heard?
Are those three different things or is process improvement one?
Oh no, the agility is the one thing.
But, but you said through process improvement and?
Technology.
Is that process comma improvement comma or is that process?
Oh, process improvement as one and then technology. I get it. I'm sorry. I didn't under, I didn't understand the question at first. Thank you.
I didn't phrase it well. So, so I, I, I like it here, but often when I think about process and agility, they're at cross purposes is oftentimes process cripples agility. And in this particular example, for, you know, for example, the Caitlin factor. And this goes, I think this goes to some of what Chris is saying. Like I, I just, I trust the the process that's intact works in that, you know, uh, Ken has an understanding of what the board conversation expectation might be. Um, has access and interest in, you know, polling the board when necessary for something that requires agility. Hey, we're thinking about, you know, deploying, you know, a tiger team to the pyramid for the lost souls that were looking for Caitlin and trying to get them from here and there, however you want to, you know. But I, I'm thinking of doing something that's a little innovative and different outside the process and you pulled board and can execute without having to go through, you know, the, the innovative processes that were described this morning. So I don't know what that looks like. I'm asking maybe for some help in trying to, you know, capture what that third comma is, but I think, you know, process, technology. Maybe there does need to be another, but maybe that's just sort of the Baptist church. I mean, I need, I need three. But, but I, I think, I think, you know, when I think of agility, what I, I'd like to just fold into that is again, the ability for, for Ken to adapt to the expectation and assumption and belief that Ken's going to be able to adapt to the Caitlin opportunities, but also further down in the organization. Um, folks are entrusted to also follow the leadership of Ken and be trusted to do X, Y, Z. In my own little leadership world, you know, I don't need to see every social media post anymore. I don't need to, I'm empowering people to understand what my direction and expectation is with respect to how we put the, the, the Long Beach City College image out there and then empower them to do that. And if it needs some correction, hey, you know, you didn't, you didn't have any, you know, white people in our diversity picture. You gotta put some white people in our diverse, their, their peak or two. We want to, I can't, blah, blah, blah. I know I said X, Y, and Z. It seems like you made a misunderstanding. And then we tweak that along the way, but they have that empowerment. And I think when they have that empowerment, it also goes to morale because money is not necessarily what gets people happiness and a job is investment and the overall success of the organization. If we can trust them to do that, then you have that too. So I think it's, it's a multi headed Hydra that we can throw in there. It may not need to even need to go in here, but that's my tip talk. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Well, what I want to do is get the, the feedback from the rest of you to say, okay, where do you want to take this in terms of it? It still has to show up on paper, right? And so we're talking about agility. We're talking about meeting the needs of the customer. We're talking about process improvements. We're talking about technology. We're talking about empowerment.
Absolutely.
Well, Carl, can I ask you?
Okay.
There's two ways to do this. And are you open to instead of making that bucket, have a lot of words in it. In my mind, there's a separate bucket, which is the empowering our workforce bucket, which is its own thing. That's not part of agility. So I think we need to empower our workforce to meet the organization and users' needs. And we need, I mean, it doesn't become part of the words, but we need to do that by training them, infusing values in them, making them feel valued, getting their feedback, monitoring our performance, improving retention, you know, all of the things. But I think of that as a separate bucket. Empowering our workforce, different than like having an agile, change oriented organization.
Yeah, I accept that with, with one caveat that included in that we factor in that empowerment for the, um, for Ken. So that in that, in that, the upper level management be included in that.
And how would you like to have that added in terms of things?
Whenever, whenever, no, we're, I'm, I'm agreeing with.
No, I, I got, no, okay. I know I got this as a second, a whole second thing.
So I think we could say empower the workforce across the entire organization to meet the company and users' needs.
Okay. So I have empower, empowering the workforce across the entire organization to meet the company and user needs. Okay. Um, so we have two or three, excuse me. We have strategic partnerships. We have the agility to meet the needs of the customer through process improvement and technology, unless you want to wordsmith that some more. And we have empowering the workforce across the entire organization to meet the, to meet the company and user needs. Am I representing your thoughts the way you want them to be?
As far as those are concerned, are we still talking about growth?
We still are. We aren't done. I mean, those were the three we have so far.
Opportunities.
Right. These are opportunities. And so you can continue to build on that.
We have three.
Yep. So three is fine. If you wanted a fourth, the thing that has come up a lot in individual conversations, it's better addressing first and last mile, which is not the traditional purview of a transit agency, but I think is critical to growing or regrowing riders.
Yeah. And, and just to flesh that out a little bit from my perspective, I think that's great to add. Support that. But I think it's, it's, it's also an opportunity for us to be innovative. I don't know what other transit agencies do. I don't know how they partner with the cities or folks who are responsible for scooters, for example. But my sense is from the conversations I had, I've had is that it's not typical across agencies. So that gives us another place to get that number one marketing word new and innovative into our to our story. So I, I support that. I, you know, I was, I don't know if this is appropriate here or not, but if not, y'all could just tell. But I was surprised during yesterday's presentation that communications and community relations budget, first of all, was so small. I was surprised by that. Um, I really was expecting a bigger number and I was well, overall the budget, but specifically the sponsorship of, of community events. Um, so I think in an area and an opportunity for growth is investment. And increasing our budget for community outreach and sponsorship. So that could look a bunch of different ways. It could be an enhancement beyond what sounds like a, you know, a level of dissatisfaction around how we are engaging with the my community. For example, how can we expand and improve that? Well, you can't do without money. You probably could, but probably not. Um, and it could look like where we have more money. So we don't have to make you feel good about coming to your meeting. We can actually give you something to help their San Fran event be more successful with our logo on there, blah, 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 blah. Cause you get 10,000 members of the Kamai Community, you know, Long Beach City College. And this is a way for us to enhance that. But if you can only give somebody $500. This is, it's like they say in church, you know, we'll take the kind of jingles, but we prefer the kind of folds like I'll take it. It's like I'm doing Juneteenth, some, you know, somebody who remain unnamed who had more to give gave me 500 bucks. And I said, thank you. But then I got calls from folks in the community who heard about that amount. And they were like, that's a slap in the face. You shouldn't take that, blah, 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 blah. You just, you know, they have X, Y, and Z. So if we don't have it to invest and we're trying to do our best and we invest a little bit, we can may experience opposite effect where we're actually losing friends based on what we're giving versus just increasing our budget and giving a little bit more. So I would like to see us explore the possibility of increasing our budget for community outreach, specifically sponsorships.
Okay. So I'm going to phrase how I put that down. And I want to make sure that that accurately reflects your point. Investment in increasing the budget for community outreach and sponsorship.
Yes, but I think Chris has some.
Just respectfully, I think that's overly specific for this exercise and that's a discussion to have at the budget meeting that we're going to schedule. And I think I hear you, like if resources were unlimited, but they're not unlimited. So I think that has to be weighed against other investments or, you know, it's kind of entering into like micromanaging the organization. So I just, I'm not saying you're right or wrong because I don't know. I'll learn more, but it, that seems overly specific for this kind of strengths weaknesses.
You'll be on the parking lot somewhere.
Maybe, but while I appreciate that, I've, you know, I've experienced the effectiveness um, of a board taking a more proactive approach to this specific line of relationship development from an institution to the community. And that example is specifically the port. I worked for everybody hated the port. They want to shut down the port. Same people are still catching asthma. They're not complaining as much because there's an investment. That was, that was a board.
Well, also clean trucks, but, um, yeah. But okay, I mean, the air got cleaner and the port mints money. I mean, that's an exaggeration, but it is a different financial situation.
That's true. That's true. That's true. But the point is to allocate those funds in a way that was more
Right now. Okay.
Any previous year and the impact was immediately felt and felt more quickly than the reduction in knocks and socks from the diesel trucks.
But here unlike there, I mean, to make a further investment, you don't take away some something. Like there's no pot of money.
Okay. And Abigail, you had a comment?
Yeah. I, I mean, I agree. I think I, I agree with you. Um, however, I just feel that I would love to give more to community events, especially the, the small community that are just, you know, putting like the ALC seven literacy fair, right? Like those are really key areas. However, I think looking at the budget and looking at where we're headed, I wouldn't want to give community the perception that we have all this money. When in reality, we're going to be struggling in the next couple of years. Um, and so I think that's my only challenge. I would love to give more to community. However, I think as we see the budget, as we see the projections, I just get a little bit worried that we might be creating a perception of us having a lot of funding, like, cause we're not the port at the end of the day. Um, the port has a lot of money like that. We unfortunately are not in that position. So that's my only kind of hesitation on that.
I absolutely agree. I think, I think a slightly more broader, we should continue to do even more in the community. Um, is really important. I don't know that I feel comfortable getting so prescriptive as to specifically sponsorships should be the lever that we pull. I think that we should leave it up to staff to determine the best way to do that. Because I think if we're looking at our end goals, while the port is a decent example, I don't think it's the ones we want.
We did this.
People don't.
We're going into this as the next thing.
The local community is not the end user.
So I think that's good.
For the port, right? So at that point, it's more just a PR issue. Do we support this as an org? And you can do that using sponsorships, right? And change people's perceptions of us. We already have a pretty positive public perception. And I don't know if we have the data to support that increasing sponsorship specifically increases ridership at a commensurate rate. So, and I'm not saying that the data isn't there or that, that it would paint a different picture. But I think we should pull the levers that are, we already know are most effective. But I think that would be worthy of tacking on under like strategic partnerships. One of the things I'm not, you might've been stepped out for that, but we had identified our main strategic partnerships are like with the city, with businesses and educational institutions. But if we did like local nonprofits and local orgs, I think that's a worthy fourth edition on there. That would still be part of one of our key highlights, but it's more about a partnership with the community. That's not, we're giving you money, but we're here. We're putting in the blood, sweat and tear equity, not just the financial like, and I personally think that might be better.
Yeah, I appreciate all that feedback. I accept all that feedback. And you know, maybe it's not like, maybe it's provision of, you know, services or buses or something. Again, those specifics can be worked out, but I like your.
And adding it to the strategic partnerships?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull that back in and, and go through these and see where we're at and, and see if there's any additions at that point. We have strategic partnerships and I've pulled in the city and businesses, schools and nonprofits. You know, and that's not limiting it to those. It's kind of needs to be an et cetera, right? But, uh, for example, those are the ones. Um, an agility to meet the needs of the customer through process improvement and technology. Empowering the workforce across the entire organization to meet the company and user needs. And better addressing, and I'm, I've changed. And better addressing, and I I changed a little bit, I've got innovating to address first and last mile solutions. Because that came up as another phrase. So if if it could be innovating to address first and last mile solutions. Okay, so those are the ones that I have identified at this point. Are there any additions to that? Okay, then Mr. McDonald wants to address.
I wanted to take three minutes. And address something that I may not have explained clearly when we started this. I keep hearing that we have to add. That whatever we're doing is for the customers. Our strategic priorities, the way that it's laid out, and I I didn't spend time explaining this, so I tried to take three minutes and do it. So the first thing is our service, improve service and service quality. When I look at what we're talking about, they would be distributed to these areas for us to work on them. So. Improve service and service and 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 safety and service quality. If it's a safety or a service issue, we're gonna go under that bucket and look at it. Exercise financial accountability. If it's something that has to do with finance, it we look and put that under that area. And foster employee engagement. I heard a lot about employer powering employees. These three things are things that we have total control of. They're inside of the organization. And we do all of that with the sole purpose of enhancing the customer experience. That's basically the way this operates in the organization. And promote community and industry focus is all about how we grow the organization. So everything that we do is done towards enhancing the customer experience. So. When we make some of the statements, we don't have to reemphasize the the customer. From our internal perspective, because all of it is done specifically for the customer. I wanted to make sure that I explained that because I did not when I went through the strategic priority of. How we spend the weeks and that we spent on the months that we spent when this was developed. It was to look at, we have total control of service, total control of the finance, and we have total control of developing employees. What we don't have total control of is the customer experience. But our point is to get information and make sure that what we do there constantly improve the customer experience. Other we otherwise, there'd be no reason for us to operate the organization. I just wanted, because I kept hearing it, is it gonna go to the customers? Everything goes to the customer. That's what we are here for. There's no other reason in terms of existence for LBT if we're not looking at how we are. That what we do is enhancing the customer experience of growing ridership or something related to customers. So I just wanted to share that because as we're gonna talk more about the rest, some of the afternoon. This is really important that we all look at how we operate in the organ within Long Beach Transit. Are there any questions for me on that? But I thought I should explain.
About that, but can promote immunity and industry focus is so great. It could mean anything. Can you help us understand what it means to you?
So a lot of this is we things in the community that we do to. And I guess that again, that's about growing the organization. So we promote, how do we promote? Right now, we we know that within eight hundred feet of most of most homes, eight hundred thousand people. There's a bus stop. So the things that we do that that are im- implementing transit. And then the industry focus is what what I talked about earlier about outreach, federal government. Going funding or coordination with the other transit agencies in the area. Coordination with Metro, all of those things come under the industry. How will we look at the? Growing the organization, where do we spend our time with associations? And with the federal government or the local state government. So that's what that that high level point of it is. What breaks down under that is really about our branding. How do we put our brand out out there and protect that brand? I hope that explains some of it. Might be more that you can add to it, but that's the, when this was put together, that was the intent of where where we. And there has to be intention as we go with it. So I just wanted to explain that. Any other questions about the strategic priorities?
I have a question. It's kind of related, but it's. What about our political relations? I I've been hearing a lot in the last two days about political. You know, the city doesn't agree with Long Beach Transit. Long Beach Transit may have some issues with the city. So. Do we have somebody on staff that handles political relations for us?
Marisol, our government relations person. Some of what I'm hearing here is kind of news to me in terms of I feel that we. Set quarterly meetings with the city, looking at how we coordinate what we do together. There are differences about what the city, where the city is, where we are. But those are things to me that you work out. I don't know that we have real negative relationship with the city. I'm surprised to hear that happen since said here. I meet with quarterly with the deputy city manager and as much as I can with the city manager. Differences about how we do things, but I don't know that we have negative relationships. So it's a little bit of a news to me. I am going to go back and ask them. How do we, how do you feel?
Sounds like the council is a little bit.
We reach out to the council a lot in terms of what's going on. I'm I some of it. I would like to get some more specificity.
I never said it was negative. Staff tries to all work together. I said that there is some. Not positive feelings among some of the elected officials, just so we're capturing.
What you just described, Ken, is not what I heard us say.
What 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 I was just responding to what?
And in your response, you characterized.
As negative.
That is, but you specifically said the city.
The what?
You said the city. You said the relationship with the city is negative. That is what you stated.
Yeah, that's what I thought I heard.
That is not what I heard us state. And so the characterization that Director Chris just gave is my interpretation of what I understood as to be saying.
Okay, can you repeat? Can you repeat it for me? So I.
I think there's good relations on a staff to staff level, whether that's, you know. City management or staff that works for Josh or myself, working with your staff. And I shared that. As part of a different labor back and forth, that there's been some concerns expressed by elected officials, but that's at the elected official level. And the working relationship between the city and the agency is good. He wouldn't describe it as excellent. I think there are areas for improvement. I think that. But I, when I say something is good but not excellent, I would definitely not say that is. So I just want to make sure we're all clear.
I I agree. And and what he described, which I understand as well. Is that there is concern among the elected officials specifically around the fact. That the way the labor negotiations were handled. So that is what I wanted to make sure was clear and separated. And in Director Sutton's question, he specifically asked about political relationships. To me, that is not staff to staff conversation. What he's describing is. What are our relations at the city level, at the county level, with the elected officials and the elected environment? Maybe even at the congressional level.
It's a little both, isn't it? It's government relations and political relations is really why I'm trying to get off. It's making sure that we're good partners with the city, with the county. And with our transit providers, but but I I was hearing yesterday, there was a lot of. Riction perhaps is the word when we're starting to talk about. Well, you know, we should go to the city and ask for help with with the government service. And so, well, we need to correct some things first. So, you know, that's what I alluded to is. We need to do kind of the same thing we're doing here with the city and making sure that we're on the same page moving forward. Because we've got a lot of high-profile events coming. Not just get dead.
I think that's true. And I think that there wasn't a lot of communication during the pandemic. And then it's sometimes hard to start back up, but. That started back up and. There's room for improvement and we should work on that.
And I also just add that's a big part of why I think Christopher and I were both pointed to this board. Help help with that relationship, help build, uh, build that gap as well.
Chair Sutton, do you feel like you got enough answer to your question?
Well, it's nothing we're gonna resolve at this meeting today.
I mean, if you're interested, I mean, I bought the paper view more regularly. I give you some of that feedback. I think. There's awful group dynamic and maybe sometimes in the meetings with the city and the agency. Everyone's very polite and then that doesn't. Always surface.
Because it sounds like Ken's thinking everything's great and you're thinking everything's good. And and should be great. And so the only thing, the only way we're gonna get around some of these financial hurdles is by working. Closer with the city and and seeing. You know, how we can leverage the tourism and 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 some other aspects of our business. So. I don't think it's for me to have that conversation. Anytime you want to chat, sure. But but I I think it's this relationship that needs to.
It's broader than two people. Good news is that out of this conversation, we've determined the strategic partnership with the city. Then on the top of that is the area that we want to focus on for this strategic plan. So I think it's there.
So I've always met with the city manager, the deputy city, Linda Teton, and I met once a quarter. I didn't know that I I never reported that back to anyone. I Linda left and I met with. April and April and I set up a quarterly meeting every quarter. We just met about three weeks ago. We we meet, sometimes it's on, sometimes it's on Zoom to make sure that we keep that going there. So. I know that there is that connection at my level. We have a quarterly meeting with the staff that Linda and I. Started years ago where we meet with different levels of Long Beach Transit and with the city. So I am, I I'm saying that we have, I would keep it good. I wouldn't say that it's a great relationship. There's a good relationship of information exchange that goes on. So. Can we, can we meet and talk about it? I'm surprised to hear about the political. I'm gonna look into that when I walk out of here. Because I hadn't heard that before.
As the head of the agency, you must understand that there are dynamics, right?
With people, because you deal with people, yes. People have people dynamics, yes.
And the dynamics are such that a quarterly meeting with the staff is one dynamic. But there are a whole host of other dynamics within a pretty good-sized city that also have to be considered. So I think that that's part of what we're saying here. We don't, let's, since it is now a blind spot, let's open it up and make sure that you. Are aware that that spot is blind and let's make sure that you are cognizant of what those larger dynamics might be.
I think if I could, I I missed the earlier conversation, but I caught up. You know, the forces of the universe are subtle, such as politics. So it's politics. You live, we are in a democratic, dark blue state, in a democratic, dark blue city. And you have to navigate that as the head. I know very well how the city works. I worked there for ten years. Worked for the city manager. I staffed like officials. Managed and created the government relations division of the port and the city. The good news is you have a good, good, good sense, lots of experience. You have a good person. And and Marisol, who you brought in, which I think was a very wise move. I think you're not going to be able to give a progressive state and a progressive city everything they want, no, you know. Nobody's ever gonna get everything they want. You know, I think, I don't know what led to any decisions or really what all the rubs are, but I think being able to. You know, stand on those decisions from a institutional, financial health perspective, whatever the rationale was. Wherever it is, is where it is. And and if you can't go back on negotiations and you can't go back on negotiations, that that is what it is. And what's left to manage is left to manage. But what that looks like to me is. Hearing from your board that there is some political static that needs to be calmed down somehow. Hearing from your board that it's not a conversation with staff that's gonna get that done. As somebody who grew up in this city under a strong city manager, form of government, is not that like that anymore. It's not where you can just. Talk to, you know, the city manager and things will get done. The dynamics have changed and the power has shifted in ways that require us. To pay attention to the politics more closely than just focusing on what's good policy. You know. Being able to say, we can't do this, but we're doing this, whatever the the this is our. Is important and how we communicate that to the elected officials is important because that's tied to. Money and policy that matters to us. And that's all a part of the government relation relations. You know, art, it's not really science. But I think. The takeaway from this, if it were me, if I were, the takeaway for me would be, okay. I need to call folks and say, hey, I heard you're manning me, you know, why are you happy? What can we do about that? I think it's, you know, getting together with, you know, capable government affairs minds. In-house on the board, maybe externally. Having a conversation about, you know, really one of the problems and how do we approach it? And and then going forward, it's not gonna be, you know, a one-shot deal. It sounds to me like our focus has probably not been. As precise on the politics as it needs to be. And even when we, you know, tweak the focus and make it more precise, it's not gonna fix everything. But it's definitely, I think, gonna address some of these concerns and get us moving in a direction that's more positive.
Well, you seen something I didn't know. Like I said, I heard that some of their. We regularly had meetings with each council member, talk about their issues. I am gonna walk out to here and make sure that it happens again, because that hadn't happened in a couple of months.
I think it would be wise, and I don't know if you do this, I assume that you do, but if you don't, then I recommend that you do, not to micromanage, but here's. Here's a recommendation, that maybe great as a micromanage, but take Marisol with you.
Well, it has always been that. My, Marisol is the one who would set the meetings up, who would get the agenda. I would show up and meet with them. That had always, so I am saying that in the last couple of months, that haven't. Happened. I don't know all I'm hearing, but union negotiations, I'm hearing about think concerns about the organization. I am not the kind of person that sit down and not go in to find out what it is. So I will. When I walk out to here, I will, not in the sense of seeing anybody, to just go out and meet with them again. So that I understand what it is, what are the issues that they've.
One of the things I I appreciate about your leadership and always have is the strength in your technical acumen. One of the things that I think makes a good government relations meeting happen. Is having, you know, a good Robin. Go in there and be Batman, but you know, let Robin throw. Throw their boomerang too. Let them, you know, use some of their utility belt too. And what I mean by that is. For in my experience, if I go in with the the mayor, if I go in with the city manager, if I go in with the executive director of the port, if I go in with the president of the college. I realize I am Robin. You know, I mean, I'm not Batman. They are the star of the show. It's supposed to be that way. But there's space either whether whether I take it, or they defer to me, or we talk pregame and. Or or I see where Batman has has already stepped in it with something like, oh, you didn't know that there was a landmine there. You said. You know, pink, and they hate the color pink. Let me come in here and make them think it was red. Like giving the government relations person or people or staff the ability. To use their relationship. They're out drinking and partying and getting to know these people and doing democratic progressive stuff. You ain't doing it. So let them use that relationship in those meetings for the greater good of organizations, giving them a check.
I hear what you're saying. I hear.
And you know, I would recommend considering that approach.
I am hearing that I something I hadn't heard before. I am going to look into it. That's all I can say.
Can we get back to strategic priorities?
Oh, wait, I have a quick question. I know that during labor negotiations, we got two letters from elected officials. Did we ever? Send them a letter with an update?
I'm trying to recall who you talk, what.
Um, I think Josh, someone member Josh Valentos sent this.
Oh, yes, I met with him. I don't remember, I I don't, I met with Josh, I um and talked with him. In fact, I. Saw Josh just last week when I was in, out there, we were on the plane sitting across from each other. Um, I didn't talk to him about that, but I um, but I talked to him about it back when this occurred. I I I think clarity was a big important part in that, what really happened. Um, but I, like again, I don't wanna stand here. I'm a person that believe you go inside behind your desk and solve the problem. I hear that there is an issue, I'm going to look into it. That's all I can say. I don't, I can't have an answer here today, cause I. One of the things that I heard, I did, I had never heard before. So I'm going to look into it. That's all I can promise to do when I walk out of here.
Thank you. So for the matter regarding strategic priorities, so I've gone over this document a few times and I really, really like it. Like I really. Appreciate what you've done here. I finally realized that what is missing. Is the detail and description that you provide regarding the leadership competencies in here for each of the strategic priorities. I think that this document could benefit, on page six, we have the the wheel here. But it doesn't have the narrative that you've given.
That I just gave you here.
Yes, so if this, if that could be added here, I think this would be great. Um as far as a complete document around your strategic priorities.
Good, good feedback. Thank you.
Yes, and we will continue with picking up um strategic priorities right after lunch. So um I would encourage you, one of the things again that we heard is that you did know each other well. You did a great job with those introductions. This morning, we learned little kid that, excuse me, tidbits about each other. I would really encourage you um for the next. Forty minutes or whatever it is that we end up taking now for lunch, that you um take that time. And use it to further those relationships of of the people around the table. Um we will be easily able to pick this up. And come back to it because we'll start with the strategic priorities and how all of this stuff that we've had for discussion this morning feeds into that. Um and we'll do that when we we return from lunch. So and with that, we will um. No, okay, uh we will go to lunch. It's in the um room where you had your breakfast as well. And if we could meet back here just a few minutes before one, that would be great. I know. I mean, back, um Raul had to leave, um but I wanna make sure that we get back on track for everything. I wanted um take this opportunity to have you all thank Jen for all the work she did at getting the breakfast stuff here. The lunch stuff here, the cookies from yesterday. I mean, she's taken really good care of us. And if you would join me in thanking her for that, I'd appreciate it. So, uh. And you are not allowed to get sleepy because you had pasta for lunch. So hopefully we'll have lively enough discussions that that won't be an issue. Um. The purpose of this morning, in terms of looking at strengths, weaknesses. You know, opportunities and challenges was really to set the stage for. All the things that Long Beach Transit is involved in and and it's important for us to look at all the perspectives. The really good stuff that's going on and the things that may need some improvement to be able to know where we want to take the agency. From this stage on, this is a strategic planning meeting. And strategic planning meetings are really set to be able to uh look at a direction that you wanna see the agency go. In this case, we've chosen over the next two years, but we know that it's more than that, right? Because it's, it's the next two years and beyond to figure out what the needs of the organization are and to be able to. Um be present in looking at. What it's gonna take to set the direction for Long Beach Transit to be uh to continue to be really successful. So our discussion um now moves to the dis- the strategic priorities. And again, on page six of your written report. Um it has all the comments that people made in terms of the strategic priorities for the organization. I asked Jen to leave this up because we see the strategic priorities and as Ken explained to you. Whether we're talking about promoting community and industry focus, improving safety, safety and service quality. Excuse me, exercising financial accountability, fostering employee engagement, all of that. All builds down to making sure that we're enhancing the customer experience because that's what Long Beach Transit is here to do. If you go back to the vision and the mission, what it talks about is being able to make sure. That we have transportation that's provided, that meets the needs of the customers. And does that in a safe and efficient and effective way, but it is all about that customer experience. That's why Long Beach Transit exists. Um I thought Ken's definition of this and I thought your suggestions to her were really great in terms of. Um that those, that those definitions or or uh the ability to know more about how you flesh these out. Is really important for people to understand so that, uh because there was some question about what is promoting community and industry focus. Okay, but when he explains it and then how it fits into the picture, now it makes a lot of sense. I am hoping that through the course of yesterday and today, you feel like you've learned a lot about Long Beach Transit. Uh many of you have lots of personal experience when it comes to this board and to uh the organization itself. But there are always things that we can learn that show us how it is operating and maybe why it's operating the way that it is. As a board, your role is to look at the strategic priorities and make sure those are the priorities that will really lead. The agency well and represent the agency well moving into uh its future and in particular, again, the next two years. When I asked you, um what changes you would like to have, different things that came up were for community engagement. Um that it should be added to enhancing customer experience, okay? But I think as Ken defined it for you, you see that um community engagement. Is a key part of what's already there. You know, sometimes we can wordsmith so that we add things to everything. It doesn't necessarily need to be added if we know the true intent of what each of those priorities are. So I wanna start with, um are there any of these that you want more clarification on in terms of how they exist today?
Well, we have the opportunity to be provided with um. Once these, you know, if these become the strategic priorities, will we be presented with a. A plan or a set of goals around how um the agency intends to meet these strategic priorities?
Well, actually, to a degree, have already been presented that. Uh these are the current strategic priorities and your job today is to decide. Are they staying just exactly the way they are or is there some differences that you want to see? Okay, but then when the board, when the uh, excuse me, the executive staff came in. Okay, and when Ken gave us reports, he took this to the next level and the the next level is the initiatives. And he said, okay, under each one of these strategic priorities, okay, then. There are initiatives that exist and that's the how, that's the how these are gonna be accomplished. So for example, thank you for putting that up. She's so intuitive. Did you, I didn't even have to look over there or anything. Alright, so um the strategic priorities are here. If you'll go to that next one again, Jen. Okay, so for improving safety and service quality. Okay, these are the priorities that Ken presented in terms of forward-facing cameras on buses, evaluating the workers' comp program. Updating emergency response, developing predictive maintenance programs and implement cybersecurity programs. Those are the top level initiatives that all fall under this. Now, the next level of that was when the executive staff came in and they said to you, okay. This is what we've accomplished so far, but here are our initiatives moving forward. That takes these. And pushes them down to the department level that says, here they are. So in essence, you have heard that. Um whether you're gonna need more than that, you know, that's up to you. You certainly have come up with other things that you want more information on. Okay, but right now we wanna stay at a higher level and that is. What are the strategic priority that needs to be, what are the priorities that need to be in place? For Long, for Long Beach Transit. And you don't want priorities to be shifting like. Every two years, we're gonna redo these because it should be something else. On the other hand. Every two years, things change, right? And we have different things that come up. Certainly when we had COVID, nobody anticipated that. Well in advance. So sometimes we have to react to what the environment is we find ourselves in. And so that's your job today is to look at these prior, strategic priorities and say. Do these still meet the needs of Long Beach Transit and are they gonna get us where we need to go? So that's what this discussion at this moment is about. We'll start at the top, improve safety and service quality. Okay, she just showed you on that one what the um initiatives were. And then you heard from the staff how that gets fleshed out into their individual departments. Okay, so as an overall operations um and goal. Portion of what uh the agency is looking at, is that a strategic priority that you think is still valuable? And really represents what Long Beach Transit needs to be spending some of its efforts on. Again, we're talking now big picture. Okay, not little details. This morning, we were into lots of details.
That was super helpful. Thank you, Carol. I uh I will need to see them again in the context now of having had all those conversations. So at some point, maybe we'll go through them all. The other question that I have is that we had a robust conversation about. Overall um strategic priorities of stru- I don't know what else we call them and you took, but you not, you noted those down.
I did.
Okay, so how do those fit into?
That's exactly what we're, okay, this is a two-step process, right? So the first step process in this is we're gonna look at these, okay, alright, we're gonna take it from the small picture. To the big picture and then we'll show how it all wraps up underneath, if that's okay. So right now, so those other ones from earlier today are gonna probably fit in here. Right, they're gonna wrap up into this, okay? Just as some of the things over here that you brought up are going to wrap into it as well, okay? But what we wanna know is high level now and keep you at that high level area. Improving safety and service quality, is that one of the key strategies that you want LBT to have as it moves forward? In operating it, its transit system as a whole? And any discussion on those?
Maybe show them again.
So I think this one's a given that we would keep.
Okay, this, I'm sorry, I did, I couldn't.
It's a given, like we would keep this. It's perfectly aligned with the discussion.
I I think it's aligned with the mission, the goals, the values, right?
Yeah.
Okay, now, the things that go up underneath it, that's the next step. But right now, we're just looking as this, is this one of the high-level priorities? Okay, if you go to the next, another one, okay, exercise financial accountability. Automatic passenger counters replacement, initiative comprehensive fare study, ERP EAM implementation. Drive technological improvements, evaluate scheduling system. And all of this is done within the context of staying within your budget as an organization. That's a given, right? Okay, but this is, these are the, these are some of the initiatives that fall under this priority.
What what are priority around um managing for, you know. Conducting proactive activities to consider where the overall financial health of the organization is going, where does that fit?
That's kind of my comment. I mean, of course, we wanna exercise financial accountability, but I think what we heard over two days was. We want a little more forward entrepreneurial sort of thinking about how do we address. Upcoming financial challenges before they arrive. And when I read the words, exercise financial accountability. It doesn't tell me that. It tells me like have strong internal controls and. And, you know, watch expenditures, which is good. I'm not against that.
That's good.
But that doesn't tell me like, figure out what the revenue picture in the future is, or if we do have to. Um shrink service in some way, there's a shared value of not having layoffs. So that means strategically twenty-four months before. Sort of managing headcount through attrition. And so this, to me, this all is only half the loaf, right? And there's several pieces of the bread still missing.
Okay, my question back to you is. All of those things that you said, can they be initiatives that are under that? Or do you feel that that still is too limiting? Because what you've said is it it only encompasses part of it. Do you feel like the priority itself is still too limiting that those things would not fit under that heading?
I think we need a head, to me, it's a heading that somehow denotes current and future, okay?
I think, did I know?
Nope, nope.
Um I think the word I would be looking for for this is exercise financial proactivity instead of accountability. But that's not.
Proactivity instead of accountability?
Right, I think that denotes some of that future thinking approach to be proactive. You have to be accountable, but I. Don't necessarily wanna spend twenty minutes identifying exactly the right word.
Exactly.
At the end of the day, these bullets aren't gonna change. Um if anything, we're gonna add things to them, so.
Exactly. The initiatives, we're not, that's the next step, remember? Okay, but what I'm saying is, okay, when you're talking about being proactive. Do you feel that can't fit under exercising financial accountability?
I would argue from a logical framework, accountability falls under proactivity.
Okay.
But that's my own personal bias.
So productivity would be the larger picture. You know, being proactive, you mean, excuse, proactive. Proactivity and then the accountability would fall underneath that instead of. Uh being proactive falling underneath accountability. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, I just wanna make sure that I'm representing what you said correctly. Other discussion? I know it's after lunch, but we were pretty lively before lunch, so I. We wanna keep it moving.
Was it clear that what I was suggesting is that that priority would land here, the priority around. Thinking about our future finances lays it here.
Okay, so in terms of this, that proactivity part is, is what you were getting at as well, is that correct? Okay, so being proactive for the future as we exercise our financial accountability. And you're saying exercising financial proactivity, but that also includes accountability.
I was presenting that as an option.
I think it's the same. I don't really know what the, what's in the circle, just as long as it denotes that we are forward-looking in our financial health.
Okay, and can that be done, and again, just playing devil's advocate here with you. Can that be done through the explanation of what that is? Or do you think that uh the term for this has to actually change in order to reflect that? Because I I loved your point that you made earlier about every time they show up, it should have that explanation. With it so that everybody's clear as to what it actually. with it so that everybody's clear as to what it actually, you know, all the, all the pieces that fit under with it. And so would it be acceptable to say, okay, as the description of this, it is important to make sure that we're looking proact, proactively, proactively into the future, okay? And making sure that, that financially, we are are preparing ourselves for down the road, not just being accountable for what we do day in and day out.
That is correct. So we're waiting on that definition. And then the interim, what I'm more, more interested in is making sure that the bullet point has a, there's a bullet point regarding that future financial health, because currently, it's not an initiative.
Yeah.
Like I said, that's the next step.
Okay.
And so I'd be glad to note that so that we don't lose it. And, but so the bullet. Something to the order of proactively planning for sustainable, for continued sustainable future financial stability.
Yeah, so just the cities, they're part of the agency, but just for like contrast, and the city's strategic plan, the goal is financial wellbeing and the initiative is the city is fiscally resilient to meet current and future challenges. So I just think wording wise, just financial accountability is more about controls and what you're hearing from the board is like a vision to be addressing future needs now rather than later. And we just wanna make sure that's.
And so what I'm hearing is that you won't happy with leaving this as it is.
But I don't wanna waste the next hour changing the world, yeah.
Provided you with the guidance on what we'd like to follow up with.
And are you understanding that, okay? So it is, this would stay the strategic priority, but there would need to be an initiative specifically called out that calls for proactively planning for continued.
Financial health.
Yeah, financial health and stability.
Of the organization, yeah.
So for example, as part of this retreat, we got the five-year budget outlook, which was really helpful. It was also terrifying because we shouldn't be balancing our budget based on capital money for operating costs or reserves. But like, it was helpful to like, now we know what that outlook is. So I think that kind of forward is, is more helpful than the kind of like month-to-month reports that the board gets that are kind of like meaningful but not meaningful, because being balanced from month to month when you're about to be in a you know, 20-plus million dollar hole is kind of.
And the, and that's where that proactive planning comes in, right? Is to have you look and see, and that this is two years of strategic planning, but it's much more than that. I keep saying, we have to be looking further down the road because we know some of that is gonna take place after that two-year, after that two-year period. And at this point, it shows that there are certain funds that are gonna be used to help balance that budget. If there is additional revenue that can be received from other sources, it will lessen the necessity to rely on, on that as the only source of making that, that budget balance. Does that make sense?
So, so what I'm hearing is, and to me, this is the, this is the 2025 fiscal accountability. And, and to me, fiscal accountability would take both current and future. And we do that, because we couldn't have presented the five years if we don't do that. So what, what seems to be the thing here is in this annual, we're trying to incorporate some kind of long-term financial planning or financial outlook, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
But this year was just 2025, so where do we see? Uh, where should I, as a CEO, in our, in the side of the organization, where do we present the long-term focus? Because this is a one-year focus here, that it may be, it may, it may take multiple years to happen. But this is what we're going to be doing in 2025. The initiatives for 25.
Right, and so what, what Ken is saying in terms of this presents you a one-year initiative, and what you're saying is you wanna.
It's, it's multi-year.
Yeah, so man.
My expectation would be that you understand in the description that's going to be presented that this has a long-term look. And then the expectation is that next year, 2024, 2025, you will present what it is you're going to do specifically in that year. Is it an, you know, a, a revenue replacement strategy around advertising that you wanna do with cities? So you'll tell us what that one-year activity is that you're doing to be in a position to, um, you know, address what this future financial health will look like.
Yeah, that's what I felt that I, and again, what I'm understanding, this, we presented a one-year here, what I'm hearing is what is the other side of it of the long-term focus of the organization? And what are you doing in this year that is related to the long-term focus? That's what I'm hearing.
That's right.
So I'm putting down long-term financial planning, what are we, when we look under that, what are we doing in year one, two, three, four, as we go forward? So that's what I would done, if that's the understanding that I got it, it makes total sense to me. So we don't have to change accountability, because you could be accountable for short-term or long-term.
If you wanna keep that term, that's fine, we just ask that in your description that you'll be preparing, that you note that there is a long-term look.
Yes, beyond the, the year that we talk.
Okay, so then the next one. Foster employee engagement. Again, the, the current initiatives for this are connecting an employee survey, reactivating the intern program, developing, uh, develop employee development plan, replace and expand fitness.
I should create.
Evaluating and maintenance apprentice program.
There's a type where it should be create employee development plan, or extend. We have it already, the idea here was how do we continue to expand that going, so we don't, it doesn't stay static? So there's something of that word that went, arrived there, but I will solve that.
You can note that, Jen, as well?
Yeah, expand employee development.
Is the term reactivate, is that something that's still relevant, or did you already reactivate it and then, so then?
So we had an intern, we had an intern program, we stopped it during the pandemic. Uh, because we couldn't put, we used to put them like three or four in one room. And I stopped that, so now that we're here, we built spaces for the interns. So we wanna reactivate the intern program that we stopped when the pandemic happened.
So it's been in existence.
But in, once you've reactivated, then is that the check the box or is it a sustain it?
Well, we, uh, we've had it forever, but yes, that, if we wanna say sustain, but that reactivating it, we just get it back on track again and start having um, the intern program each year. We budget in our budget for interns. So it is just that we restarted the program in 2025. That's what I'm saying, this is the one year, we wanna make sure the program, my goal is that the program begins again. So if you wanna add some other word there, but we are going to reactivate it because we stopped it.
And again, we're getting real specific into initiatives, and I wanna make sure that we're approving the strategic priority itself first. I understand that you need to know because that all meet, but is that an appropriate strategic priority for moving forward to foster employee engagement? Yes.
So we had a great conversation about employee empowerment. So to the extent that when we, when we have the description for this area, it'd be great to reference that strategic priority interest of the board to foster employee empowerment, could consider changing name, you don't have to. Um, and then I, I think the survey is a great start. Um, as you mentioned, Ken, in terms of not being in negotiations and trying to gain a sense of the pulse of the, you know, of, of our employees, so I think, but I think that empowerment term should be in there.
And I would forward, agree to that. That's something that I noted now, I think, uh, well, I'll out myself for that bullet, but that's what I wrote down is potentially changing foster employee engagement to uh, fostering employee empowerment. Uh, and I think that aligns really strongly with what we talked about here. That being said, so long as it's somewhere else in the descriptor and that it's clear about to the board as well as to the rest of the company, that we're not just here to keep you engaged, we're here to empower you to be here.
But not at the expense of engagement. Right, right? So as long as there is a description that very clearly addresses the empowerment of employees as a key component of this, or the description, and you're okay with that staying that way? Okay.
And I think that fits directly under the development of the employee, the employee development that we have there that says create or, or upgrade the employee development plan, that part of it is how we have something about empowerment.
So it can be fleshed out in two places, one in the description, but also fleshed out.
It should be right here, yeah.
Part of here.
Yeah.
Not less than two places, but not, not in the one employee development plan. That, that fits more closely around training, whereas we want, that we want employees to have the philosophy around the circle is empowerment.
And so that's why it's key, it's in the description right from the start. But you're okay, as long as it's in that description, and you'll be given those descriptions to look at. So this isn't a voting today, but it's to make sure that, that you're all on the same path and in agreement. Okay, next one. Thank you. Enhance customer experience. As Ken pointed out earlier, the idea is that all of these strategic priorities that have been listed really do roll up into making sure that it also is there for the cus, the, to enhance the customer experience. Um, the, some of the comments that came out of the surveys was um, community engagement as part of that customer experience. And let's see. And, and making sure initiatives include all diverse customers, multilingual customers and communities as well as including a focus on adjusting service to meet riders' needs, with creative service planning, not just a nice experience in riding the bus. Okay, and so when we're talking about enhancing customer experience, the initiatives that are currently under there are implement customer care framework, audit the bus stops amenities and artwork, implement wifi pilot in buses, implement pilot wayfinding, wayfinding system program, and upgrade the customer notification system. So those are the specific initiatives that fall under this strategic priority. When you're looking at the description then of it, okay? Um, do you want, according to some of the survey information, something in there in terms of community engagement as well? Yes.
I think based on our robust conversation, I thought the the description picked up something around the strategic partnership here, because that's part of, it, strategic partnership may go under more than one, but here, in order to enhance the customer experience, um, you, you mentioned it briefly, but when we use the term agility um, as a board and agility, you know, for the customer using the technology and process. So all of these, that those two at least, um, should go in the description. Um, and then I am, I would be looking for initiatives that we feel like we are undertaking that allow us to live up to those uh, descriptions, that, that description here. And then as far as, um, community, that also could be part of strategic partnerships. We talked about adding nonprofits there, um, so that might be a way to bring in that.
So.
As we listed all those others, we would in, in list communities for community engagement as well, one of those partnerships. I would just say, okay.
So can I make, may I make a suggestion in that? All the things that were mentioned there by you to new, it sounds like it should be under the, uh, community and industry focus. How do we increase partnerships? How do we more engage the community? Because those things would come back into enhancing the customer experience later on. But to me, what I'm hearing is that we should put that in there as ac, actions that we, how do we ex, expand more partnerships? We have partnerships already, I, I brought them when I talked about all the partnership here, but I'm hearing more um, that in the community side of what I presented yesterday, that we expand on partnerships. We have, so is that, should that be more on there, on that part of expansion than here with the, with the, with the customer experience?
I'd be fine with that. I do think the agility, though, piece that we, that probably should stay. But the strategic partnerships, if you wanna move it here, I would be open to that.
Yeah, I, I would think it would fit more in terms of what we do, that that is here, that we, you know, the, the things I heard this morning about reaching out and meet, and, and would let, you know, the legislative, uh, uh, bodies that we have, how so those things to me is where I'm gonna go here with that. And the partnership should comes there too. And the agility, so can you repeat the agility piece for me one more time?
We had a fantastic statement.
Put agility with.
Agility to meet the needs of the customer through process improvement and technology.
To become a more agile organization through process improvement and.
Serving people.
So I, I, I tend to put it because to me, in the end, I expect all of that. So what am I gonna do? Because in the end, it's all about the customer, right? So if I'm looking at it from, what I would walk out to here and do is that process improvement and technology to enhance the customer experience. I, I, you, you understand what I'm saying? I'm, I'm being agile, doing those things so that I, because in the end, all I, everything, everything that I do, I look at it as how does it affect the customer? Because if, if it doesn't affect the customer or help us to be more efficient, why are we doing it? But in the end, I always kind of put the customer as the, I do this, and then it does that make sense what I'm saying? I, I hope so.
Does, part of our discussion was that we were, that was absolutely part of it, but we were trying to also be agile in who the customer is, as well.
So the statement you are gonna put down, I say that, that would be the statement, my, what I tend to think is, oh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make that happen when I walk out of here. Well, I'm gonna look at process improvement, I'm gonna look at technology, and what are the ones that can help me to look at the, who, who rides, what it is that I do for them? You know, we have segments of people, the thing I do for students, I wouldn't do for a worker. They're different in terms of their needs, so I have to understand that when we put the service out. So those things are, I'm just saying, maybe I'm explaining too much of my thought in how it is, but I think I understand what it says now. And it can stay here on the enhanced the customer experience.
And it would say now, um. Okay, I'm, it still needs to be words spent, but it's the, it's the agility through process improvement and technology to meet the needs of the cus, to meet the needs of the customer and enhance the customer experience.
Yeah, I would just put the diverse customers. I, I, because that's the thing is that we wanna do is that we can, we don't wanna just put one size fits all. So the diverse customers that we serve, we wanna make sure that our process and our um, technology that we're bringing in helps the diverse customers and not just one size fits all.
So now I have agility through process improvement and technology to meet the needs of diverse customers and enhance the customer experience.
Long, but I can go with it. If, if the.
Description part.
Yeah. Okay.
Did everybody miss anything? Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna promote community and industry focus, measure, evaluate, and communicate the value of transit and trans dashes that are called out there, conduct operator survey, community and customer survey, focus groups and mystery riders, calls. Um, host industry events such as Trans Dash Summit, APTA, CTA, and NTI, and communicate legislative, legislation, excuse me, affecting Long Beach Transit. Does that take into, um, what we had discussed, then moving to this area, is the strategic partnerships? Um, need to be part of that and we would take that from the earlier section. And strategic uh partnerships included city, schools, business, nonprofits, um.
I'm all concerned about the last bullet being passive. You know, I mean, I think we advocate and communicate. Right? So, I mean, I would. You know, because. I know, Ken, you go to Washington, right?
The real, yes, and we can. One of the things with this communicate is that this lately, we have a lot of legislation. Vince mentioned a couple of, we seem to have a plethora of of legislation coming in now. That I have to make sure that all the staff knows that this is affecting them. Because so that somebody doesn't do something and we find, well, I didn't know that that was a new legislation. So this is what that is, and if we wanna add something that says, yes, because that's part of what, that's Marisol's full-time job. But advocates.
Right, and and when there is new legislation, you have an opportunity to go to the author and say. I know you're, you're well-intended here, but you know what you're gonna do to me?
Yes.
You know, so there is a give and take that happens.
Yeah, there's the advocacy that happens about legislation and then there's the communication of it. So we could put. We can put advocate and communicate legislation.
Some of this might also be my wordsmithing on this because I, I think uh the documents that I got from the staff. It was that they wanted to create a plan to communicate um legislating of, and I think that was both. Uh, at the legislative level and internal with employees. So it was, uh, this one was to uh, uh. Create a plan to communicate.
With stakeholders.
With stakeholders, yes, correct.
Employees legislation.
Right, yeah, so it was to create a plan and I kind of, you know, bullet point, I was trying to shorten it. So yeah, it was create a plan to communicate.
Okay.
Legislation.
Yeah, I would put both so that we have a very clear.
Does that meet everyone's needs? Thought I covered enough. That's good. All right, so is the consensus that with those additions? That that we um are keeping the same strategic priorities, but we're making sure that we add things, I believe, to not.
So in order for me to feel like I can do that, I need to revisit the um, just. Making sure that all of the matters that we went over earlier today are included in those.
Yes.
And specifically am missing the area around sustainability. Um, not from a financial standpoint, but from an environmental standpoint. And that was on our list as a priority that the board wanted to see, and it's not as well reflected in the current strategic priorities.
Would you say that might go under improve safety and service quality? It's different than service quality, you know, so. I'm, I'm trying to see where you would like to have that added. You're right, that's one of the other things that we're gonna go back and get a lot of pieces here. That is listed, so, so.
In order for me to answer that question, I'm, I'm, I did my best to try and hold in my mind, I didn't write down all of our priority. So that I could put them, so that, you know, put them into context. Cause then I will be able to determine whether I'd like that to be its own strategic priority area or if it can go under another one.
So we had a sustainable, creating a sustainability plan, we had talked about hydrogen and electrification.
So it has to go under service.
Yes.
So that's where it is now.
So if we could go over what uh those were. The opportunities and the weaknesses of this. Yeah, that's, mhm, that's a good possibility.
Hear that, and this was. Improve safety, service and sustainability.
So service quality, I would say that that has to take in the point of sustainability about the type of vehicles. That's where all our service issues are gonna be addressed. When I bring to talk about. Electric vehicles, if I'm gonna talk about hydrogen, hydrogen vehicles. Is gonna come on the service quality. So anything that we deal with that has to do with, to me, sustainability would be part of that service quality, quality of the service you provide.
We're okay with that. We like the word sustainability.
And so that would be put into the description uh under that area?
And then the expectation is that there is an initiative that at least.
Yeah, in my mind, initiative doesn't just address. Doing sustainability like. The whole story here at Long Beach Transit is about sustainability and being a leader in alternative fuels and it's cost us a lot of money. Which relates back to the financial position we're in, which relates to being able to tell the story, which relates to. Being able to ask for help from the legislature, so. Someone has to hold that all together, like it has to be someone's job to hold that all together. I don't know how to put that into words exactly, but it's not just. Like a little thing over there.
Yeah. We should have our own climate adaptation plan as Long Beach Transit, just like the city has. As an example.
So and that goes under improve safety and service quality. The next step to this then would be. That there would be these uh five strategic priorities and the description.
I wanted to make sure we went over all of the. Priorities. I just wanted to make sure.
Or that we incorporated all of it, yes, okay. I, I have a, for a little more with initiatives, kid, if you'll be patient with me for just a minute. This is strictly the strategic priorities now. Okay, what we would do is um, you will get a list of. These five strategic pri- priorities, but with a more concrete description that goes along with it, that incorporates. A number of these different things into those descriptions. Okay, then what you wanna see is some additional initiatives that go with that is what we go into for our next piece of discussion. And that's where I make sure that we pick up all those pieces. That's okay. And maybe you see it as part of that whole big picture and maybe you don't wanna separate those two out and that's okay. I can, I can. Do initiatives along with this, cause we've kind of been blending that anyway, uh, as we've been going into these discussions, but the, the thought now would be to go up and make sure that we. Pick up all those pieces of the initiatives. Uh, of the, of the points that were made under um, the strengths and the weaknesses and the opportunities and the challenges. To be part of initiatives that are included now. In these priorities, cause you've seen the ones that have been presented to you. By both Ken and staff, and this is to ensure that these are things that are important to you. From that point, after we do that, we're gonna, you can't have a to-do list of fifty things. And so what we're gonna do is again for initiatives, but also for, for bringing this full circle. Is be looking at those and setting some priorities and a lot of those go together, right? I mean, even though they're listed as individual things, many of them have the same theme. Kind of things and making sure those are there because those become things that either become initiatives or things that need to be accomplished. Um, and I, I'd like to say that for the next discussion, and so. With this, um, we can move to those things that came up in all of those sections um this morning. And make sure that none of those get lost in. This part of the strategy discussion, so. For strengths, things that got added, included being trusted in the community by ridership and as a community partner. Uh, involved in industry and um industry recognition and workforce development. Okay, then in terms of weaknesses, we added um. Funding. We added works, workforce challenges, we uh added understanding customer needs. And underneath that was also identifying future riders for um. Uh riders that we can retain. Um, having a business model for transit of the future. Um, communication, getting feedback from the board, um, and then the need for a dashboard for the board to access. Um, core information on a regular basis in real time with ten to twelve measures and um. That that would be coming now to as an agenda item to the full board. Um, as one of the concrete initiative things that that was discussed this morning. Under um obstacles. We discussed that the top obstacle was labor relations, okay, that um. As part of all of that, we would be looking at staff retention and turnover. Um, and hiring challenges because that was a priority for the majority. Uh, planning for the revenue. Fiscal cliff, the sustainability plan, and then being nimble enough to address user demographic changes. Under opportunities for growth. We talked about first and last mile innovation, innovations to address first and last mile solutions. We talked about strategic partnerships. We talked about empowering the workforce across the entire organization to meet. Uh, the company and user needs. We talked about the agility through process improvement and technology to meet the needs of diverse customers. To enhance the customer experience. So those were the notes that came out of this morning, making sure that each of those fit into one of the categories. Yes.
Appears to me that the one that I did not see us find a place for was first and last mile. Here, it seems to me that all the others were accommodated.
Okay, so would that probably be um either. Uh, under it's safety and service quality because it's a service that's being provided or um.
And I also thought of it as the strategic partnerships too.
Yes, to, in order to be able to do first and last mile.
Yes.
Okay. Let me make a.
It can, it can live under customer experience.
So I think to do customer experience, right, you have to think about first and last mile and you do have to rely on partnerships, which is not just the city, it's.
Other third-party vendors.
And also like major employers and we heard yesterday that. We do have a partnership with Cal State Long Beach, but it maybe used to be a stronger partnership than it is today, but maybe that's also an opportunity to like. Regrow that partnership and uh, you know, I. Wouldn't have all the doubt, but I think of like major employers, like the medical centers, you know, what is the relationship and how could it grow?
I added the notes under strategic partnership from what you just said, um, the major employers and um, the colleges. I think we put schools before, but I'll specifically say colleges.
There's this whole discussion about. L B C C for all and the um campus or not campus, but building that's open now in North Long Beach. And that's the specifically like fill a need, but then. That need also exists because there's a travel time from that part of Long Beach to, you know, the liberal arts campus, so. There's a lot of, I think, discussion happen there that maybe isn't. Or maybe is happening, but could happen. Better or more.
Yeah, I'll just share that. There was a specific conversation about possibility of meeting with LBT. Uh, around how we can improve routes to address that problem. That was a couple of weeks ago, how that. Rhythm of my role here and my role here.
Yeah.
Properly marinating that conversation, but.
But that question and conversation has been marinating. For years, so that doesn't mean there hasn't been work done, but maybe there's an opportunity to get it across.
And I have that then under the uh partnerships? Correct? Am I, I just wanna make sure I'm having it in the right location for you? Okay. The next thing that we would do. Moving forward is taking a look at the list that you came up with, and let me propose um. Something to you in this, um, we're going to have to narrow that, that list of fifty. Um, or however many, fifty-one, whatever it came out to be um, to do things, cause that's, that's really. A lot of a to-do list in some ways, um. Many of those things are gonna fall under what I would um venture to say is communication. And it's communication with the management, with the board, for the kinds of things that you want more information on. Okay, and it's that feedback loop from the board then, after you get that information. As to how you communicate back to management, and I see that as a full circle loop. I think a lot of the things that we covered on there really are communication issues. And could fall under, whether it's report on this or give us numbers on this or what is this? That really, that falls under a communication system that you develop between the board and the management. And I think, um, you know, they can't report on all of that all at once, but what kind of of reporting that you would like to see come out of this? So that you feel that on an ongoing basis, you are in the loop on things that are really important to all of the board members. Now, that's still keeping in mind the kinds of questions that you've asked. But when we're grouping it together to say, okay, what are, as Ken keeps saying, what are his marching orders going forward as he leaves here? How does he? How does he do fifty things? Okay, it really to me comes down. We might wanna pick out some other things as well from there, but it comes down to um. Largely a communication plan that is developed that the board and management agree on that says. This is the kind of communication we want to receive, this is how often we want to receive it, and this is the form we wanna receive it in. The, before we get into a lot of details, does that make sense to you from the discussion that we've had with that? Or am I on the wrong page?
That makes sense. I mean, I think some of the things on the board there though are just like one-time things.
No, and we're gonna go through and prioritize. Okay, so, but that's a communication thing again, right? Okay, and so we wanna prioritize things so that they know, but I think if we look at an overall. Um. Step one of a solution for many of the issues is that a solid communication plan get established. So that those things can be reported to you. And that you can then provide feedback back to management. How would you like to have that communicated uh moving forward? Because this must, this seems to be a gap, right, that hasn't been occurring at least to the board's satisfaction? So what is that, what does that communication plan look like in your eyes? That would help bring those, not only these things, but other information to you. Um, that you ask for so that you're making sure that that is always a continuous feedback loop. And that it isn't just, well, here's the report, now we're done. Okay, because I think it's bigger than that. I think it is a communications um solution that we're looking for. So what do you want to see?
Well, and maybe there's a, a, a different time for this. I'm assuming this is what, where do we go from here?
It, it, it's part of it, yes.
I, I think. In light of your comment that this is a two-way street, um, it's definitely not a one-way street, and I think a lot of. It's definitely not a one way street, and I think a lot of this the last couple of days has been. Kind of a one way street of us communicating to the team what is it we need. I personally, I mean, I know I'm still relatively new to the board. I know other board members are as well. I would really like to know from Ken. What we can do to better support, not just you, but the rest of the executive team. And the way that we as a board of directors do our business and what our responsibilities are. Like we have a responsibility to understand what they are on our own time and frankly, to educate ourselves on the things that we're trying to help with. But I would really like to hear some of Ken's honest, transparent thoughts about what we can do better so that we can write that down now. And factor that in when we're developing.
Into that communication plan.
That works for both parts.
Ken?
And thanks for asking because I've. I um. I I felt as I sit there. I I felt like. I I saw a sack under this, all these things that beans has been thrown in the sack and somewhere along the line, Ken, you're going to solve that. So thanks for asking. I I think it's really important for to me, it's more about making sure that we understand. First, let me start how I would look at it. When I look at this, I look at the strategic focus. And from that strategic, the strategic priorities, try to figure out if it's not a one like the go pass report. That's just a report. So we will come through the one, but. Making sure that I understand where these things fit in the next couple of weeks before I go in here. So. Once I do that, to me, that's where I would want the board to come back and look at how we prioritize what is expected. So what I don't get is that what I asked for that three months ago and I didn't get it. And it's part of what, you know, the many things that I said that I'm going to report, like the go pass report. I reported that I was going to bring that in June. I've 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 had that come to me three times. You want to go pass report? I just quietly sit there and just listen. Because I just don't know where that information end up going when I say that I'm going to do that, do it, and then it. Later on, I still find that the same thing come back to me. Olympics, I said, I'm going to come in July or August after the Olympics is over in Paris and I'm going to give a report on where we are. I think I got three reports already. I want to see an Olympic report. So I'm it's sometimes it's a little. I have to deal with it and massage it. There's a lot of different people. Have to understand the different personalities and why things happen. But I I I think it more, I'm trying to figure out how do I after this? Put those communication that these, this is when things are going to happen. So that I could get that kind of support that yes, we agree it's going to happen and so and so day and everybody knows that. But on these here, to me, it's really important that we we categorize them. And get that supported the board on the categorization. Then to just walk out of here and say, you got fifty things we need to have, and then I have. Nine different people coming and say, well, my three that I talked about that I'm not getting. So that would be the most difficult thing for me to deal with. I see a lot of hands up, so I would let we we start with the with the chair and go around over.
So I I mean, they're kind of the bane of my existence, so I can't believe them suggesting it, but like at the city. There's a formal, when there's board request, there's a formal response. It's called a T F F, which is two from four is a one way. Communication from the city manager to the elected officials. And honestly, I've written some diplomatically worded ones and sometimes the response is like. We can't do this. We're not going to fulfill this response, but at least there is a response. So I think I hear your frustration like. Several people have asked about the Olympics and I told you it's in June or several people asked about the go pass report and it's in June, but. I don't know where that exists in writing, so I think you may want to think about a more formalized system.
Yeah.
And then every request, we it's like a giant Excel spreadsheet. It's nothing special, but. Every request that every elected makes ever, whether it's verbally in passing or as part of a formal meeting or whatever. Those are all tracked and they're tracked. For the city manager's protection so that an elected official doesn't say like, I asked you this for and you never got back to me. So. I mean, we all got to know each other more over these two days, but it is a formal body and I think having some kind of. Formality to how the board request and permission request go in and out. Would help you.
So yes, myself and Jen has talked about exactly how we're going to do that to make that happen. So we're already thinking about us. Our process for that so that it will be coming. Because like I said, you said exactly, I think I could you express it the same way I would. How do we make that happen? So the frustration that I have is 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 decreased. Because we all know you can go there and see what the response was or when the response is coming.
And when someone asks for something and then they get a memo back saying like, well, the reason we can't give it to you is it would require three hundred and twelve staff hours like. That is more satisfying than not hearing back. So I think in both directions, it's helpful.
But then a lot of this, like you know, the onboarding, but. It's punching us up and then going forward. So like. Some of that is like basic information.
Yeah, I'm talking, I what I'm requesting is I'm going to look at categorize categorize categorizing it. And then from the categories, be able to say instead of the eaches, I would like to make it more into categories. So, okay.
Comments and went along the lines of communicating. Information about what's coming up on the agenda. Another board that I sat on, one of the things that we did was for each of the board meetings. There would be a section for potential topics upcoming. And then that way it was on every single agenda. Don't have to put the month if you're not comfortable with that, but at least. For the reports that you get requests regarding. People will know that those reports are still coming and whatever that calendar year is. And can, you know, note that that's there. So that's one and the two from fours, they're very intense, so I don't know that you want to go that route. So this is my other suggestion is just noting that it's an upcoming agenda item for twenty twenty four. And the second is related to how we might use the rest of our time. I was really pleased to hear that you are open to categorize, taking the list back and categorizing it because I do think before. We can really tackle the the list, it would be nice for it to be categorized. By topic area and potentially by timing. If some of the things are just one time, then we can. They're in their own category as one time request. And then that way we can find another opportunity to be able to share where we think the priority should be within those categories and within maybe the timing request.
Thanks, thanks for that. I I say one thing to we. What you recommended, the first thing you stated is exactly how we do the board meeting. Jen comes to the executive team every month with a six month look ahead. So it is something we can just kind of figure out if we take time or when it happened. Just how does the six six months look ahead on action comes to the board. So we actually do that internally. Because otherwise I wouldn't know what what's going on at all before we get to the board. So we have a a process we have already. We'll figure out how that process gets. To sharing the information on what we're planning.
I hope you take heart in the idea that you'll be able to quickly answer our questions. Regarding when something's coming up, even if you've answered it a few times over, but you will, you will have ease of access to the answer.
That's all. Thank you.
And so for my my comment, I know you mentioned. About the Olympics, about all of these reports, but it's really hard when we've asked numerous times. And you stay in silence, right? And I understand you're grasping a lot of this information, but I think. To Christopher's point, I think creating a system and I'm glad that the I didn't know the city did that. About these reports because many of the times were. As asking you at the dais and you're just like, okay, like you're you're and I'm I'm understanding that you're grasping that. That is being done, but we there was so many times and I know when we met, I was like, hey, we. We've asked you for like ten items and we never heard back, right? And so I think being cognizant of that. It's hard for us to know when the when. It's hard for us to know when you're planning on doing, doing something when you're not communicating with us. So I'm glad that you're rethinking that strategy. And how to better communicate because we're bringing these items up. Without us knowing that there that you're already thinking of a timeline. So.
And I also want to comment and say that. I'm sorry you're feeling like we're we're throwing things at you. It's not our intention, but we. Really care about long beach transit. We want to make see improvement and like I tell my staff, like we're always need to see. In what ways we can improve because that's how we grow. So just want to make that comment.
Thank you. I I thanks.
You only suggested that I would add to that with the fact that, you know, I'm I'm a very visual person. So it just. And I've always worked in sort of Excel categorization. It's easier to see just avoid my request. Date and then your response and then Excel sheet. I think simplifies it as opposed to also having work with. The other side on your your bench and clearly reports just so many damn. Process before it gets to a war. That your staff would get totally frustrated with, you know, you got all these layers of people that you need to 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 formalize the actual response. But it was just kind of one sheet Excel that says, okay. Director asked for this, this is sorry and and just then you can see.
Yeah. I guess Jen has something like that that we do and. Reports the things that are coming before the board already, which department it came from, who is it this? And so how we expand into that to come into something is what we're going to do.
Yeah, I don't think we'd create more work for you. It's just the thing with the directors are expressing is just. We ask a question if it's a no, yes, maybe so. Then at least have the respect to just saying yes, no, maybe so it's coming.
Yeah.
Okay. As a staff person, you know, I love hearing innovations that lead to more work. But as a staff person, I also love. The possibility of being called out and I think that or about. Something that I know I addressed or believe I addressed. And you know, someone may not remember that I addressed it. And that that's not a knock on on staff. They just don't remember it and they're. Fire member, they have a responsibility to post they represent. And you know, they're going to. Speak on it in that way. So I I would. You know, as a shortcut, so I want to say this too. Jen does a fantastic job. I haven't had a whole lot of experience. With her, but I've had a whole lot of difference with folks in her position. You're a good job as you do technical stuff and beyond, it's all tissue stuff, hard 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 stuff. So you know, as a shortcut, I would. Reach out to our friends in city manager's office. Because you have good relationships, relationships with them. And I did the same thing at Long Beach City College. I reached out to. Doctor Curley and said, hey. You know, can you have some templates I can copy? And the two for friend memo. That you can either kind of get it, get it from them, you can get it from, you know, the the website is public information and copy that format. And not just to Chris's point, protect yourself. By quote. But also efficiently communicate with everybody at the same time. So it's if you know, director sudden ask a question on the Olympics. And you answer it in a two four front, you can just CC the whole board. Now, if somebody else asks you about it, it already exists and you don't have to.
Yeah.
You know, do the effort again and you can check the box and say, I answered your question. It may not be. You know, to your satisfaction, or it may just be a whole bunch of information to me as a lazy board member and not agree past the first paragraphs, which is too much information and I'm. Going to check the box. I want to ask you again for it. But it is, I think, an effective communication strategy. A good measure to inform decision makers on on any board. And. At least importantly, a protection for staff, all staff.
I think we. I think that's we we've already had that conversation exactly how we're going to do that. Like I said, some of it exists and. And again, I I think you had a comment.
I do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I I think everybody said everything. I think the matrix idea is perfect. I. I would like to see this. I would like to see us use technology if possible, if it doesn't take too much time. To have a parking lot for Borg. Where we can go on a maybe a secured website. And see the matrix and see. Other answers to things as that matrix fills out. What's going on? Because we only meet once a month. And we only think about, we may not think about, believe it or not, we may not think about Long Beach Transit every day.
I join it.
So so. And I I wanted to say one thing about.
I don't think about it every day either.
Or that board over there.
Yeah.
And we haven't been tasked with prioritizing those. And we haven't been tasked with consolidating the friendship. So so that's a that's another. Day's worth of work there for somebody to go through and do that. I'd be glad to do it if Jen wants to send it. But but. That just represents our ideas, top of mind ideas. And and it's really up to us to follow through on those things and prioritize and 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 with your help and your staff's help, make a reality.
I think.
I could just clarify because I did have a discussion with Randy during lunch about this topic. So just wanted to remind of the board that when there is a board request item at the board meeting. When a memo does go out, you know, if Randy is the one that asked the question, that memo does go out to the whole board when it's addressed via memo. I do have a a document that tracks those. So again, you know, I could work with Ken and the staff about how we can provide that electronically to the board. Honestly, right now I'm showing technically three topics that we haven't addressed yet. Everything else that's been brought up during meetings, I'm showing and I do exactly like you said, I have memo provided to the board on this stage. You know, answered by Ken at the meeting. I so I do make those notes when they come up. So I already do have that document started. And and I like that right now I'm only showing three outstanding topics that I haven't addressed to the board. So. You know, Abigail seems to have a lot more, so maybe it's conversations that. The board needs to have with me to, you know, maybe I get something in a meeting, you know, maybe. So you you know. But. I do have those documents and I do have that documentation. Ready to go as well. So.
Do you mind trying which ones are the pending ones?
The pending ones I have are the second street part, it's second street parking, the stop parking. The Cambodian outreach and the senior advisory or senior outreach as well. So those are. And and L B T. I haven't added the from the last meeting yet, so.
I requested Lisa's report on supply chain.
Can you repeat? I don't remember that one.
That was one of the first ones when Lisa came and presented about.
This is, but this was actually during board meetings. So not not anything that's come from this meeting, but this is actually board request that you guys make at the public meetings.
I don't do ever. I remember one about, but but go ahead. I'll let you finish.
I have mentioned this in the public meeting, but I mentioned it yesterday. That you just referenced that you just mentioned were what we talked about yesterday as well.
No, no. So these are, these are board requests made during the board request item during the agenda item during the board. So I, as I said, you know, sometimes I may miss miss things. But I I did not have that. I think the other one employee.
Yeah, it was the one I remember. Yes.
But I don't have anything. Again, I wasn't taking order from this boutique that is, you know, Carol's job to facilitate us with that report. This is just a document, as I said, for the board request items that come up during the. Still that there's something hasn't been addressed, please let me know. I can add it to this list. And as I said, I'll work with him and work with staff on how we can make this document accessible to the forecourt so you can see our communication and.
So that's the intent that when you walk away from here, we can improve the process. Seems like we have a few leaks. How do we, you know, plug those leaks and go forward? So. I think I. I am. Appreciative of the openness to how we go about it, but we have to put some things in place to make sure everybody has the same answers. And we'll make that happen. And I I guess I see like you're setting up, so I want to just thank the board. I think I was very impressed that this went along with everybody being here. Cause this is sometimes very difficult to have this and then someone else come back and say, well, I didn't know about that. The other thing I've learned from this today is that, um, in the times of the change of the board. So we do have a sustainability plan. I haven't presented that to this board. So how do I kind of refocus what it is? We hired a highly respected professor from, um, UCLA, um, what's his name again? Hilda Blanco, who is well known across the world about, and she came in and spent months with me and put a, a sustainability plan together for us. So I have to figure out how the things that we have, how do they come back? Because the board is so new. So there are a lot of things that you're asking and thinking, wow, we, we have that. I just asked her, I said, can you pull it up for me? She just did. But I'll make sure I look at it and how do we bring it back and make sure that we keep this board informed? Yes, we have things like in the organization. So that's just one, and I'm not picking that out. That's just one example that came to my mind. Wow, we do have a sustainability plan and I remember working with, with, with Hilda Blanco on that. So I just, I appreciate the, the, um, the support, the support and the discussion. It is very enlightening. How do we take this? How do I take this away from here now? So even if I ask questions, I'm not, I may disagree, but I'm not being disagreeable. I hope that that comes over clearly. I may disagree with something. It doesn't mean that I'm not gonna go look at it. I'm not trying to be disagreeable in the process of saying, or asking a question or clarification. That's just my way of, I manage and I try to do that in a respectable way. As much as I tried to bring that over in terms of respect. So my disagreement, I hope, in, or my saying that I don't agree or, or ask clarity or something is not a point of disagreement. I wanted to end with that because I know sometime we walk over thinking, man, he was very, he disagreed with so many things I said. Most of it asking question. Uh, Chris might walk over to the guy that wants to feel that I disagree with him. I didn't, I just wanted to get clarity in a lot of things. So. We'll find as we, we'll work more with me that that's kind of how we go. And I think this has been very helpful for me in learning some things about the board members over here. So thank you all very much.
I wanna make a comment. Yes, and I'm gonna make a comment on that based on a conversation both that Randy had and, and Joshua that you had as well. And that is that a lot of this has been one-way communication from the board forward. Okay, you got information from the staff, but it wasn't a dialogue other than to answer questions. And, um, that's where, when I talk about the communication loop, it becomes really important that that communication is a loop. That means that you have to let, um, the management team know exactly what it is you are looking for. Okay, but then also when they provide that, they have to get feedback back from you. Okay, it's gotta be a loop. So it has to come both ways. And you have to not only just say, this is what we need, give it to us. But then when it's provided, having that loop to say, yes, okay, and we see this now and we see how this is working. And this is where it sets forth a plan for moving forward. So in moving into where do we kind of go from here? It's important for you to understand that, um, two things in here. Um, you've had an opportunity over the last two days to really represent your constituencies too, and your personal opinions and, and the experience and knowledge you guys bring to the table to be able to give all of this, all of this great input so that there are things that don't get missed. And so that, um, Long Beach Transit can really benefit from the experience that each, every one of you bring to the table. You know, so that, that those ideas and those concepts get captured and that we really make the full use of what, uh, the board brings. But the other part is true, and we haven't done much talk about this. And that is when you leave this table, okay? You all are members of Long Beach Transit Board. And one of the things we haven't discussed is your responsibility then, as that board member, to go back out into the community and not only observe all the things that you think might need to come back to them and what might need to change, but rather too, when you hear about the successes and you know the work that's going on, to make sure that you're the ambassadors. And that's your role as a board member, whether, I'll, I'll look at your board description. If not, it needs to be in there. Your role as a board member is to go out and be an advocate for this organization and bring forth to the public who might have some questions, all the things that are going on that are there to enhance the customer experience, meet the needs. So it isn't, it isn't just you representing constituencies on the outside and bringing them in. You're on this board of directors and the board then has the responsibility to go out and represent the organization in the, in the best possible light and be an ambassador for Long Beach Transit. And since that really wasn't the purpose of the strategic meeting, it is a part of where we go from here. So I do think there needs to be a communication plan that became very apparent to me early on in the process. I'm the one who has to take those posters back and, and it's part of my responsibility to make sure that they are categorized and that you then have an opportunity to prioritize them in a meeting when they're in a little better form. Okay, I think you need to think about those things though. And you all have pet things and it became apparent, I could probably go around the room and tell something for each one of you that became apparent to me that's important, okay? But how you as a board come to consensus on the priorities that you want to bring forward? And then when those priorities are accomplished, you can move beyond that again. But I think, uh, reporting is gonna be a big piece of this and communicating, and that's communicating on both sides. I wanna thank you for what a candid, uh, experience this was in terms of, you had to feel pretty comfortable in order to express all the opinions that you did. And I think that's a testament to, um, trusting that, that people in the groom, in the room are going to accept those and that management is gonna accept those. And I really applaud you, especially today, for your candor and the ability to bring those ideas forward and to make sure those ideas are part of a strategic plan moving ahead. You know, uh, this wasn't to write the plan, that's a whole nother kind of meeting, okay? To write a strategic plan for the future, but it is to set direction. And I think you have made it clear, many of the directions that are really important to you individually and collectively as a group for how this agency moves forward and does the best job possible to meet the needs of all the constituents that depend on the fact that that transit is essential in their lives. I have to tell you, I've learned a lot over the last two days about your organization and about your community. I had, I learned a lot, but they shared a whole lot of materials with me ahead of time that I could read so that I had an idea of what I was walking into in terms of the, the situation. But I have to tell you, um, I'm really impressed with Long Beach Transit and I see lots of transit organizations. And there isn't a single organization, organization out there that can't improve. And I find Long Beach Transit really an organization who is open to improving every single step of the way. And I think if you look at the overall initiatives that have been presented to you, all of them reflect improvements that they want to see happen. And you can be very proud to be the board that represents an organization who really takes that perspective. And I think really does care about the people it's there to serve. And so I think you can go and leave with a feeling that, that you were heard, that we were able to get a lot of things on the table that you don't have time to get on the table during a regular board meeting. Okay, and that you leave assured that there will be results that come out of this meeting that are tangible, that you can see moving forward. Thank you for the opportunity to lead this group. You have a lot of opinions and ideas and I'll take that any day over people who just sit. Okay, I want there to be dialogue and, and people passionate about what they're talking about because that makes you a good board member. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Jerry.
The adjourned chair.
Hi, Jerry.
We have.
No, I was gonna start. Prior to the board of directors meeting, persons wishing to address the board were encouraged to submit public comments via email or telephone. Information on Long Beach Transit's board meeting public participation process may be found on the board meeting agenda or at Long Beach Transit's website, www.ridelbt.com slash about dash us. At this time, I invite members of the public who want to address the board on any matter that does not appear on the agenda and is within the board's jurisdiction. If you have not already done so, I ask to choose a speaker card to the board secretary. Uh, since no one's present, I guess we'll, we'll be doing that. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board is here to receive comments only and there will be no exchange of dialogue with the commenters. We did receive some public comments today, which Jen will read.
All right. First, a comment was from Erin Hoops. LBT str- uh, strategy public comment. My name is Erin Hoops and I am a Long Beach resident. First, I wanna say thank you. I rely on LBT to get me around town. I use the UCLA commuter to get to doctor's appointments and I really appreciate the clean, safe buses. I am a new rider. I did not ride before the pandemic. I am not low income, but I hate driving and I hate parking. My biggest gripe with LBT is frequency. I understand that LBT is in a tough spot related to the budget. And as a transit advocate, I will be asking the city for more funding, for more LBT funding. However, I think it's vital to stretch the current budget as far as it will go. Please consider as many options as possible and do not limit your thinking. Some ideas I would like to see considered are, one, ways to increase service frequency without needing more operators. Anything that makes the line more efficient to run ads to this, including dedicated transit lines, improved boarding such as all door boarding and off board payment, et cetera. Other cities in LA County are getting dedicated bus lines, but I don't see LBT advocating for this within the city. Two, ways to get more people onboard. For example, transit tours led by community groups can show community members the strengths of LBT. I worked with Carlight Long Beach and we led a group of 20 people to an LA Sparks game at the Walter Pyramid at CSU LV. People got tap cards set up and learned how easy it was to get across campus. There are also programs in other cities to train youth riders. This gives them the freedom of movement and leads to more lifelong transit rider. See, get onthebus.ca for more info. LBUSD students already get passes, which is great, and some students use the bus. However, a bit more training may help to get more people onboard long-term. And three, ways to increase funding in conjunction with housing development. AB 2097 allows developers to forego building parking if the development is within half a mile of a major transit intersection. There are parts of our city, for example, in Zafaria where there are transit routes, but the frequencies do not meet the AB 2097 threshold. Could LBT work with developers to get money for increasing frequency? This would be a win-win for developers, LBT and the community. Thanks. And the second comment is from Kurt Canfield. Hire student drivers. Open to students currently enrolled in college, part-time only. One-year work requirement after training period is complete and licenses attained. Financial disincentive if employee period is not satisfied. Get more money. City contribution has remained flat for six years. Consider changing name to Beach Transit unless city pays up. Round up bus fare, $2 fare option for people who want to pay. Identify future riders. Make more lines useful, strong ridership destinations at both ends of line. 151 terminate at CO, CO Laguna. Consider extending to Second Street MCH. 131 terminate at Alnido's Bay Marina. Consider stopping at Second Street MCH unless boats, boats are ready. No connection to MetroLink slash OC. Consider express bus from downtown Long Beach to Seventh Street to Arctic. Other regional connections at higher fare. Slow connections to airport via 111 due to dogleg at Kilroy. No last mile connection on the 112. 121 dogleg to Alnido's Bay Marina is very slow and unnecessary. Low and bad frequencies on many lines. Consolidate and focus on frequency, speed, rather than minimal coverage. Speeding up the bus, lock all seats in the front, in the front, in the upright position and use drop rap bars rather than belt hookups for wheelchairs, mobility devices that require the driver to hook the rider up individually. All door boarding, tap only buses on some routes during certain hours. And bus driver retention, onsite daycare services provided by independent contractor or agency. And then opt-in for a seat. That was Mr. Canfield's comment. Those are the two public comments received.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Awesome. Thank you. Board secretary will now call for a vote. As your name is called, if you are in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Those abstaining, say abstain.
Chair said. By Chair Medea, Secretary Teshar Anjorbe, Director Angeles. Director Kemp. Director Rawlings, Director Thrasen. Directors, okay, I'm gonna try to get this one, but Magia, Anjorbe and Thrasen have been excused.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you all in June.